All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for our council meeting on July 21st. And the, for those of us here, let's rise for the
Pledge of allegiance? Oh geez, okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Yeah, I can
United States of America.
And the Republic of Canada. One nation. Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Let me turn to Irene, our treasurer, to give the June financial report, which covers the full fiscal year of last year.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the last month of the fiscal year. As folks know, we'll start up on July 1st with fiscal year 23. But to just do a quick summary, we ended the year in an absolutely fantastic financial position with a $1.9 million surplus. Effectively, we received more money than we expected from the state, given the income tax formula. And, and from the county, given the recent county tax duplication reimbursement efforts that went through. And we spent less money than we budgeted. We still have over a million dollars in ARPA funds from this first year's tranche. And 260,000 in public education grant or PEG monies that have not been allocated. The main areas where the town did not spend as much money as per budgeted were street and roadwork projects. Staff salaries and associated benefits, because effectively the assistant town manager position did not work out as originally envisioned. And then the associated professional services on a couple of projects and initiatives have been delayed effectively. So that's what accounts for the having spent less money. I like each month to focus in on one specific area that might be helpful for residents to understand a little bit more. As, as time goes on, and this particular month, I'd like to focus on waste management or waste removal. So waste removal includes trash and treasures, leaf collection, recycling, compost and yard trash and bulk trash collection. And in this year, in fiscal year 22, we spent $439,500, or approximately $425 per household. For all of those services, every four years, this set, a portion of it, a subset of that is put out for rebid. And the contract was just renewed, so our town manager took care of that. And for fiscal year 23, it's anticipated that we're going to be spending $656,000 for trash pickup, recycling pickup and bulk trash collection. If you, it doesn't include compost pickup or trash or treasures cost, which were this year about 127,000. So if we were to put all that together, it's anticipated that for fiscal year 23, we're going to be spending $783,500 in waste removal services, which equates to about $765,000, $765 per household, a major increase. The biggest driver for this increase is the, the fact that our town offers its residents backdoor service or side door service. Meaning people don't have to necessarily take their waste to the end of their driveway. And many companies are getting out of that business because there's increased insurance costs. There's increased, of course, labor costs associated, just labor has increased anyway. But insurance costs have increased, meaning workers comp. Because people have to generally walk from the truck to get everyone's stuff and go back. And this year, in putting the contract out for bid, there was only one company that put in a successful bid. So this is not a great position for the town to be in. And I mentioned that while this contract is in place with, with the ability to renew it for, for a four-year period. It's anticipated that these costs will substan, will continue to substantially increase. So at some point, I'd like for the mayor and for the rest of the council to consider that we set aside and have some discussion about whether trash collection, what, what can we do to decrease the cost? So whether trash collection can be decreased from two times a week to one, as a potential example. Or as we do already, take out yard and leaf waste and composting to the end of the driveway. Maybe doing that for recycling might help to keep costs down a little bit. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Todd, do you have any further comments?
I don't, other than just to note to the council that the June financial report does not represent the audited FY22.
Right.
Revenue and expenditure, final revenue expenditure determination. It's, it's obviously, we're going to, we don't close the books on FY22 until the end of August, August 31st. Up there, as you'll see on the revenue side, there are still fourth quarter FY22 revenue sources that need to come in. Specifically state aid for police protection, highway user revenue. And there are expenditures that we've incurred that will continue to be spent out of the FY22 budget that were incurred in FY22. And those will be reflected in the audit.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, thanks very much for that report, Irene, appreciate it. Todd, over to you for your, your report.
Sure, thanks, Barney. I'll review some of the staff, initiative staff has undertaken over the past month. In addition to assisting with major ongoing projects, including 4H redevelopment, farm movements, market parks development, and Zimmerman Park redevelopment, all of which will be discussed later this evening. Staff assisted with communicating with the, with MTA officials regarding commitments made to the town with respect to the Purple Line project, specifically with respect to a higher noise wall and the use of an audible warning system on the alignment adjacent to the town. We'll be getting in that later, but we do have a meeting scheduled with MTA officials tomorrow regarding those commitments. Staff communicated with the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission about a, their water main break or policies and procedures related to water main breaks specifically. Specifically because of a significant, significant delay in a water main break that occurred along East West Highway earlier this year. We submitted comments to Pepco, or excuse me, submitted comments related to Pepco's proposed updates to its street lighting tariff schedules. Assisted the 5G working group with review of proposed amendments to town, the town telecommunications ordinance and development of a renewable use agreement. I don't know, Irene, if you'd like to jump in here and give a short update on where that stands, or Ron, if you could as well, about where we are in that, in that process.
That'd be helpful. Now let us know what's coming down the pike.
Yes, what's coming down the pike. So the 5G working group has, have submitted comments for both the update of the town ordinance for small cell infrastructure and to the right of way agreement. We have, as you know, engaged outside council to review these, this, hi Joel. To, to review this paperwork and provide comments, which they, which our council has. And also Ron has as well. So there's a communication and further clarification with there. What's effectively going to happen with the 5G group after that is we're going to reach out to a contact at the county side. Cause there's still a lot of questions about what exactly is this procedure for when an application is filed with the tower committee? And as there's many different avenues that can be taken, the 5G working group is also going to put together a decision tree. And coupled with that and our, our kind of clarification questions, the hope is that we can get a lot more. I don't know, insight as to what this process is, and more importantly, where are the points that the town protect itself with, in relation to these things? There, there's access to a database of all the different installations that have been put in and then also approved thus far. We're going to be doing some field trips so that we can take a look at what other municipalities that have installed this type of infrastructure. What to watch out for, what are lessons learned, meaning we'll meet with as many as we can with municipal officials as well, to understand their process. So this is going to take a while. This is going to take about five, six more months to, to iron out. But we're working as diligently as we can.
All right. Well, I very much hope that we'll be in a position to update our ordinance before the end of this council year. So that would mean something coming to the council no later than January, February at the latest, but hopefully January would be great.
Understood.
Okay, go ahead.
Great. Staff communicated with S H A officials about crosswalk safety on East West Highway. I can provide a brief update. The S H A has agreed to install, reinstall inroad signage to delineate the crosswalk. They've indicated they're going to be undertaking additional data collection and field evaluations to support any further improvements, such as a continuous curb system. And they are continuing to assess design options related to the existing rectangular rapid flashing beacon. We met with them two months ago and they indicated that same information. We've asked them for a timeline for the installation of the inroad signage and for this additional data collection to support further improvements, as well as when they're going to have the assessment complete for options related to the R R F B. We're continuing to press them because we're not getting a lot of new information right now, other than it's ongoing. So we've asked them for a specific timeline, which they promised to give us when we went with them two months ago, but we still haven't received.
For the benefit of everybody here in the council, this is a very frustrating process dealing with S H A. And they've dragging their feet over and over and over again. And they had promised us they'd be giving us various options for how the rectangular flashing beacon system could be improved within six weeks. And now we're what, two and a half months after our last discussion. So this is just, we just have to keep on pounding on it, but it's inevitably, this gets very dragged out.
Yeah, it becomes even more so with the Connecticut Avenue needs analysis. Right? Same, same people that we're meeting with, but it's unclear. It's not as pressing, obviously, as the East West Highway crosswalk, but it's, you know, what are they going to do to continue communicating better?
Okay, go ahead, Todd.
Staff continued working on stormwater management and environmental infrastructure projects per council's agreement on what projects to proceed with at the last meeting. With respect to Coquelin Run's stream bank stabilization, we actually intend to proceed without county assistance. Although we received county assistance, assistance in the last time we did the stream stabilization work, which was 15 to 20 years ago, we, the form of assistance they gave us was engineering review and construction oversight. We've reached out to the county. Dave specifically has reached out to the county to request similar assistance for the additional work that needs to be done. They've been very unresponsive to our requests for such assistance, or they've indicated they don't have the bandwidth to assist. That support with respect to engineering oversight or review and construction oversight isn't a significant cost component of the project. So we're not really going to forego any major expenses if we go it alone. So Dave is intending to engage with Clark Azar to do some initial design concepts and to put together some rough order of magnitude cost estimates so that we can present it to council and then ultimately proceed with the project.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear too, this is a project that could be funded out of the ARPA money that we have.
This is intended to be funded out of there. That is correct.
And Todd and I have discussed this and, you know, it's just a feeling of the county just not moving and we do have the money to do it. But I wanted to make sure that all of us on the council had a chance to understand that in giving up on pushing harder on the county, we're effectively incurring some additional tens of thousands of dollars of cost. But on the other hand, we're also assuring ourselves we're actually going to get a project that's going to be managed and built. That's, that's the trade off.
Staff organized the July 4th event. We organized and managed the, and attended the July 16th household hazardous waste collection event, both of which went smoothly despite a few non-
We got a lot of, a lot of very nice comments on the July 4th event.
Very nice. One of the things council will need to decide, I believe, is whether or not we're going to hold another household hazardous waste event. Since we did one at the spring trash and treasures and we did one just last week, whether or not we're actually going to offer another one in the fall or if we're going to limit it to once a year. It's, it's not a cheap proposition to offer that service as, as we've discussed before. Each event can cost around $40,000. And so we're talking a pretty significant expense. An annual expense more than we have budgeted for to accommodate providing that service twice a year. I would suggest doing it once a year, but I would certainly suggest not doing it this fall, since we've just done it twice in the last three months.
Right, okay.
Staffs continue to redesign of the website. We actually completed administration of the battery power blower and equipment rebate program. That, that program is now closed to new participants. We provided 146 rebates for a total of a little over $22,000. We, as Irene indicated, renewed our trash and recycling contract. We did also hire a part-time special projects director. His name is John Lloyd. He's been working for the town for decades. Actually precedes me in his work for the town. He was primarily information technology related. He has very good experience with project management and with financial oversight, audits and, and general daily financial operations. So he has joined the town on a part-time basis as our special projects director. And that's all I have to report.
All right, good, thank you. Hard to imagine anybody preceding you in this town, by the way. That's not-
No, I know. Dave does, and Miguel, actually.
That's true. Okay, so you're, you're the newbie on the block.
I'm the newbie, right.
The I think the something you said there that wanted to comment on, but no, it's all right. Nope, I think that's, but any comments from my colleagues?
Um, I just had a question about the update for the website redesign. Do you have a timeline for it and do you need any beta testers?
So likely it's, it's, it's a redesign only in, in the skin, if you will. It is a, it's, the functionality will not change. The modules that are done by Civic Plus are static modules. I mean, they're, they're modified from time to time with respect to functionality based on feedback from their clients. But this is more of a aesthetic redesign, a skin redesign. So I don't think functionality wise, we'll probably need beta testers at this point, because the modules aren't changing at all. And then navigation is not changing significantly. So, but I'll, actually, John and I have a meeting, a design concept meeting on Monday, the 25th with Civic Plus. And so I will inquire as to what kind of testing might be needed and let you know what assistance we might need.
Okay, and a timeline for when you think might be?
We'll get a better indication of that on Monday.
On Monday, okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, open up the mic for any public comments. By the way, hi Ron, glad you could join us.
Hi, good evening, thank you. It worked out well. Two clients switched their meetings at the same time.
Great, okay, good. Glad you're here with us. So I see a few people video. Is there anybody who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'll assume either virtual or real. So I'll assume that nobody wishes to. So that takes care of the general business. I note that it's 10 of seven. We're running 10 minutes ahead of schedule, but I'm personally reluctant to hold the public hearings until seven, just because I, I don't know how many wish to speak, but I wouldn't want a situation where someone does and they're actually planning to call in at seven. So with your permission, I thought perhaps we could cover at least one, if not two of the items under number five while we're waiting till seven o'clock. Would that be okay? I was going to suggest we could have a bit of a catch up on, on the Corso project and also the Purple Line. Those are the two, I think, items. I don't, I think we have to leave a little more time away for the public hearing. Is that okay? Just give that, all right, good. Just to cover, I'll, I'll, working backwards, cover the Purple Line, which you referred to before, Todd. Irene and I tomorrow are going to be meeting with, with Matt Pollak, who is the head for the, chief at the MTA for the Purple Line project. The reason we have to have this meeting is that since we were aware of just how dramatically the personnel has changed, both at the MTA and obviously with the contractor. We felt it appropriate to send a letter reminding both authorities that the town has two major commitments that we want to make sure it lived up to. One is the extension of the noise wall by the additional two feet, for which we signed a change order and already paid for half the cost. And the other was the commitment we received in writing from Gary Witherspoon, the MTA representative two years, goes back two years ago now, stating that when the noise device is put up at the end of the, of the portal that the trains will go through, going toward the Bethesda station. But at the town's request, they will put in an on off switch so that that noise device, which otherwise would sound every single time that the trains go into that tunnel, would instead only sound when there are actually workers on the tracks. The latter is fine with us. We don't think it would be very often, and obviously that would be important for safety in that circumstance. But we felt that this was a very major breakthrough and it taken a long time for us to be able to get to. Thanks to the good help of Jared Solomon and Mark Corman, who both intervened for us in Annapolis to push for this. In any event, so we sent this letter saying that we wish to have confirmation on both these points. We got a letter back saying, yes, we certainly confirmed the, the change, change order for the additional two feet of noise wall. But in respect to the noise device, we want to test it. There could be a big range of decibels. It may not be a problem, period. Just did not respond to the commitment that they had made that we, the town, would be able to request. And they would have to honor our request to put on an on off switch. So responded with a subsequent letter saying, please clarify, we really want that commitment. What they came back with was a prompt request for a personal meeting. And that's what Irene and I and Todd will be joining virtually, will have tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock. So we're obviously prepared to insist on what they previously agreed to. And we will see how it goes. I have no idea what their agenda is or what they would wish to propose. But I hope and trust we can get to the same point where we had left it two years ago. Do you have anything else to add, Irene or Todd, to that? That's pretty much where it is.
I think that's all.
Okay. And on the Corso project, the, I know the council's up to date, but for benefit of everyone. We've asked the, the special committee to do an initial draft of what we, what are technically called the binding elements. This basically being the covenants that will ride with the local map amendment and be recorded as being obligations on the part of the developer in order to obtain permission to, to get the zoning map amendment. And the local map amendment, I'm sorry. And we feel that this is really the, the core of our negotiations with the developers. And so I believe, as you could already have seen, they immediately turned around a first draft. And there is going to be a subsequent draft and hopefully with the comments from our attorney, Bob Dalrymple, on this point by next Monday, when we're going to have the next meeting of the committee. And following that meeting, I think we'll have a second round draft. At that point, we'll circulate that among the council and make sure we get everybody's comments. Basically, the way that, that we set it out is there's both what item should be a binding element? And then secondly, what is the value that that element should have? So for example, we want a binding element for the amount of commercial space that would be permitted at Corso. But then we also want to know what exactly that amount of space should be. Should it be the 5,000 square feet that they claim that they currently want, or do we want a different number? Same thing with issues of height, especially in the perimeter buildings, about landscaping. So I think we want to have a very intentional, thoughtful process of reviewing these binding elements. But ultimately, what's necessary, of course, is to review these with town residents and get their input. And as we've made clear from the developers, we don't anticipate that we'll be in a position to really have serious fruitful discussions with the community until September, just because of vacation time, holidays over the August. So, but in the meantime, we want to get our ducks in a row. So the more work that the committee has done, the more work that, good evening, the more work that the council can do to prepare for that, the further advanced we are. The other part that we're continuing to work on is getting a much more robust set of drawings of what Corso will look like for many more vantage points than they currently have shown us. And that's what is being done right now. And I guess we will probably get those drawings sometime next week. I think generally we have to acknowledge that the developers have been quite responsive to us. But they, this is important to make sure that we get these additional drawings. And I think it's going to be very hard for the residents and for ourselves to come to a position about what the height should be until we see these drawings without summer vegetation coverage and can, can show them around. So that's really where that is at the moment. But open up any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, thank you. So that covers those two items. And now it is just about seven o'clock. So I will open with no objection. I'd go back to a public hearing on additional appropriation of funds for the farm wins market parks development project. We had a work session in the beginning of July where the, we took a provisional vote to support the appropriation of an additional $500,000 with conditions. But we wanted to make sure that we advertise as well within the community and invited people to come tonight to speak at this public hearing, if any wish to. So with that, I will open the mic and see if there's anybody who wishes to speak further on this topic. I'm looking hard at the screen and I did not see any raised hands. I will assume that that means that there is no, there are no public comments on this, for this public hearing. Okay. Okay, good. Todd and Ron, is there need for us to take the resolution up now or should we wait till we get to the discussion section of the meeting?
I think you could do it either way, Barney. You could either, you could either discuss it now and, and, and decide to act on it during, during your deliberations after the public hearings close, or you can wait until the discussion item at the end of the meeting, either way.
If the discussion has any bearing on the resolution, then you might want to wait till after the discussion to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, I, I prefer to do that because I want to talk a bit about the letter of intent and where that stands and let everyone think about it holistically. So why don't we, that's all right with people to take it up then? Okay. So that will proceed to the, the second public hearing, which is on rainscapes rebate and technical assistance program. Let me open that up and see if there's any commentary on that rebate program. Does anybody wish to speak on that?
I, I would like to speak. It's Dan Clausen.
Yeah, Dan Clausen, please, go ahead. For George.
Trying to turn my camera on. I just wanted to give a general expression of support for the rainscapes and technical assistance program. We've been in some, the climate and environment committee has been in some discussions with, with Joy and Todd about this. We haven't completely fleshed out, you know, agreement between the committee and, and, and town staff about the parameters. But in general, our support is there to implement the program. And we may have comments when the particulars of how it is structured is put out there. But at the end of the day, we're going to be supportive of it and we think it's an important program for the town to engage in.
Okay, good, thank you. Are there any other comments from anybody? Okay, let me, I'll close that public hearing. On this one, I think it would make sense then, Todd, to take up the actual resolution. Do you want to summarize it and also provide your recommendation to council that you've given us in writing?
Absolutely. Really, it's not a resolution. It's just a, a, a vote and action of the council. The The, the program that has just now been reinstated by the county is very similar to the program that has been stood up every year since we initially offered our Rainscapes Rebate and Technical Assistance Program. The only main difference is that the county is now offering rebates up to a maximum of 7,500, whereas before in 2015, the maximum rebate was 2,500. I outlined a number of options the council could consider on how to proceed with this type of rebate and what form it would take. I think the easiest way to do this from the town's perspective, to facilitate administration of the program, allow as many residents as possible to participate, and then require residents to actually have some requirement to fund a portion of the project themselves. I recommended that we provide a 50% town rebate, such that whatever rebate was provided by the county for residents who participated in the Rainscapes program and ultimately installed a Rainscapes device would receive a rebate of half the amount provided by the county, with the condition that the total reimbursement would not exceed the total cost of the project. If the council also funds the program at $100,000 for fiscal year '23, that would allow for 26 participants at the 50% max rebate level versus only 13 if we decided to match 100% of the county rebate at 7,500. So my recommendation would be to not parse the program in terms of offering technical assistance in one request and then a rebate in, once the project is complete. In fact, well, in fact, both of them in the previous program, town program, were provided only once the project was complete. But we reimburse for technical assistance and we reimburse then in a matching amount for the county rebate. In this instance, I would say, let's facilitate administration of the program, offer 50% of the county rebate. And that can be used by residents to cover the costs associated with any technical expertise they might have received, as well as implementation of the project. And I'd also note that the technical assistance component would not be provided if the project was not complete. And the reason for that is that the Rainscapes program, once residents sign up for the Rainscapes program in the county, county staff come out and visit the property. They do an initial site assessment to determine whether or not the device, the Rainscapes device, is suitable for the property. And they give a preliminary approval of proceeding with design and ultimately implementation. And so residents will know pretty quickly whether or not the, and they'll receive some technical assistance in that site visit. They'll know whether or not the project can proceed. And then they would be, it would be incumbent upon them to then seek out some form of technical assistance and ultimately install the project. So that's why it's not separate from the rebate that we would give because they, it would incentivize them not just to do the technical assistance part, but to actually install the Rainscapes device.
Let me open it first. Let me turn it over to you, Joy. As it's clear, it's under the Climate and Environment Committee. I'll make sure we get your comments and thoughts before we open it up generally. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you. What I would like to say is, and I want to thank Todd, you know, for working closely with the Climate and Environment Committee to come up with, you know, the broad strokes of the program. I agree with Todd's recommendation that, you know, that the town could provide an additional boost, basically 50% of the rebate that a resident receives from the county. You know, let's, let's remember the point of offering additional Rainscapes assistance, offering an additional rebate is to encourage mitigation of stormwater runoff on private property that the town or the county otherwise can't, can't address. You know, we're not allowed to do work on private property. So the point of doing this is to encourage residents to take on very expensive projects on their own property that may actually only be for the benefit of their neighbors. So we do want to encourage this. One question I would have for Todd is the consulting water engineer. And so just to clarify, the, you know, getting a consulting water engineer to come out to your property would remain, you know, cost free for residents. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And have we changed the scope of what the consulting water engineer would do as well? So that if?
So, yeah, sure, sorry. We have not changed the scope. In fact, the consulting water engineer, when he is requested to visit a property, will actually indicate whether or not he believes that private property drainage issues can be resolved through a variety of measures, but including as well Rainscapes devices. And he also gives information to the residents on how to apply for Rainscapes rebates. So he'll offer, for example, the idea of a rain garden or possibly, you know, rain barrels, permeable pavement removal, impermeable pavement removal, I should say, impermeable pavement installation. It's mainly though in the form of rain gardens or conservation landscaping. And if those options are available and he thinks they would be feasible to be implemented on private property, he will indicate that and give the residents the information they need to pursue a Rainscapes rebate program application.
Excellent, excellent. So I guess, you know, overall for my colleagues, I would just like to say, you know, I strongly support the institution of this program. This is another item that we, that could be entirely funded from our ARPA grant. And we do have an expiration date on those funds. And I guess I would say, once we get to the point of, you know, some of the design features in the program that we would just want to make sure that residents have also all the information related to the water, the consulting water engineer as well. And in addition, you know, I would like to ask, and again, we can talk about this once staff really get into designing the nuts and bolts of the program, but ensuring also that groups of residents who may be at particular pain points in the town, which we've already discussed in prior meetings, that the Climate and Environment Committee has cited, along with staff input, that maybe groups of projects could also be considered or encouraged to make, to have the maximum benefit for the town.
Thank you, Joy. Dan, you want to make a further comment?
I have a question for Todd. So when the, and again, I guess we'll see particulars going forward. But when the program is specified, given the connection between the consulting water engineer work and these Rainscapes projects, I assume that will be part of the communication that goes out. So town residents are quite clear that the starting point really, unless, unless they're self-starters and are ready to go with the Rainscapes project directly, the starting point would be utilizing the consulting water engineer program as a starting point. And that, that would be part of the communication package that goes out for the program.
That is right. We would say if you need, you know, assistance initiating or identifying, you know, if you have water management problems and need assistance identifying remediation and the possibility of, of implementing a Rainscapes project, you would first start with the town's consulting water management program.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Other comments from my colleagues? Thank you, Joy, for yours before.
I think this is a great idea, a great use of ARPA funds, but just the right thing to do to incentivize and encourage. And if it ends up becoming oversubscribed because there's more than 26 residents, that's a blessing. And we can go back and allocate more funding. It's a great idea.
Okay, I guess my, I'm looking, Joel, and I, I didn't know if, where do I see, Rich, I don't know if you had any comments, but no one's required to speak. I just want to make sure I don't leave anybody out.
I don't have any comments. I support the program, so.
I have, I guess my question about it, first, I support the program and I love the idea of doing it. Just to walk through the math, previously, we supported, gave 100% match against the county, but the county's maximum contribution was 2,500. So the homeowner couldn't get more than $5,000. And I reckon that most Rainscapes cost an awful lot more than that. Now the county is putting up 7,500. And I support Todd's recommendation that because that's such a much larger grant, that our putting in a grant equal to 50% of that amount is appropriate. But that still means that, that, you know, we're more than doubling the amount of money that a homeowner can receive on the project. And, and that's fine with me. But there's something that I at least wanted to mention to all of you, which is, in my gut, I always like it when the homeowner is required to put in some money. And I can imagine there may be Rainscape projects that might only be $10,000 or $11,000 or $12,000, in which case essentially maxing out on what they can get from the county and a 50% match from the town, that would cover really 100% of the project. And as you said, Todd, you know, we'd be willing to reimburse up to 100% of the project. So I guess I would just like to ask for consideration that we drop that limit. I don't know what it should be, 80, 85%, but something so that the homeowner is still obligated to be putting in a piece of their own cash into the system. And I think that just leads to more mindful management because after all, we're really relying on the homeowner to do the project. And, and obviously would allow our money to stretch a bit further. But I at least wanted to raise that as a point for everyone to consider.
Well, they'll still be responsible for the maintenance of it, which is a big problem with, it's my understanding, a big problem with these projects is the initial installation is, is good, but then you do need to maintain the equipment, if you will, or just make sure everything is cleared out. And that's where a lot of homeowners fall down in terms of the maintenance. So I wonder if another way to just make sure that it's not just a one and done and everybody just kind of walks away, that there is some sort of encouragement on there. A, they would be responsible for the maintenance. But B, I don't know if it means the, the town. It's not like we have the resources for it, but just ensuring that the maintenance of these, this equipment or whatever is installed in terms of conservation landscaping is done properly. It's another way of looking at it in terms of skin in the game.
Just a quick question on the math of this or mechanics of this. The match, I guess from the town is 3,750. So does the match kick in after the first half of the county funds? So after 3,750 from the county, then the town, if we were to go forward with this, we would kick in? Or does the county, do the county, I mean, I guess the homeowner really has discretion. They could use all the county funds and then at that point, apply for funds from the town for up to that 3,750 if they get beyond that number, up to that number. Just wanting to, trying to make sure there was sequencing of this.
But the county isn't guaranteeing that everyone's going to get 7,500. The county only says your project may be eligible up to 7,500. So when the person comes in, and I only know this from my personal experience in dealing with Rainscapes, is in the size of your, the area that you're looking at and the type of resolution that you're looking at. There's a mathematical formula where the person can say, yeah, it's up to 7,500. But guess what? Given the parameters of your specific project, you're only going to get 3,000, which means that the town would only kick in an additional 1,500. So,
So half of whatever.
Half of whatever it is that comes from the county. So it's not a, like, coming in and get 7,500 from the county. It's the parameters of the project.
A smaller project wouldn't be eligible for the 7,500, presumably.
Correct, but could still get something from us. Yes, as well as the county.
In a weird way, we actually could be reducing, theoretically, we could be reducing in that example, what the homeowner gets from the town. If it's currently they get, if it's a small project, but currently they get 2,500 from the town up to that. So if we would have a smaller, I guess my head's spinning on the, there are many, many different scenarios here.
The max from the county would ever have given us 2,500 before.
Right.
So now they're going up, adding 5,000.
But then the town would give max 2,500 before as well. Whereas now we'll give max 3,750. Just trying to figure out the town contribution. To me, just one more additional thought on this. Sounds like there's an unending number of scenarios for how the dollars could roll on this. So, so I appreciate what you're saying, Barney, but I, I, it sounds a little head spinning for how to manage that from a, from a, I mean, we could in, I mean, if the concern is ensuring that there is some funding spent by the homeowner as opposed to them, the homeowner getting everything paid for by county and town resources. I mean, if that's what you're focused on, I understand that. I'm a little less worried about that just because there's a broader public benefit to these kinds of subsidies. They're not purely beneficial just to the single homeowner. So that's, I'm a little less, less worried about skin in the game per se because it serves, serves the community large and the stormwater management overall.
Maybe I could clarify. The county reimburses residents on a, on a square foot, on a cost per square footage basis, usually not with rain barrels and cisterns, but usually with permeable pavement removal and permeable pavement installation, pavement removal, conservation landscaping, rain gardens. It's done on a square footage basis and they pay certain price per square foot, which does not cover the entire cost. In 2015, when the then Climate and Environment Committee proposed the program, they suggested that the county rebate would provide about a third to a half of the total cost of the program or the device that the resident wanted to install. And so I think now with the rebate that we're proposing at 50% of the county rebate, I think we'd probably be looking at somewhere about a half to maybe three quarter. So I definitely think residents will still have to pay money towards the, the improvement. But certainly, we obviously wouldn't reimburse them for anything that would equal the total, the, anything other than, more than the total cost of the project. But I doubt even with the town rebate that they would get to 100% of the total cost of the project that they would implement.
So what you're saying is that this formula that, we're trying to marry together the comment that you made, Irene, and what you just said, Todd, that the formula the county has effectively puts a ceiling or scaling, scales the size of the rebate to the size and cost of the project, such that the sum of what the county is likely to be willing to pay and are offering 50% of that amount on top of that is still likely to leave the homeowner, homeowner having to put in some money.
Indeed.
Okay, that's what I wanted to establish. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments from?
Yeah, this is Rich. I wanted to follow on Irene's thought. Does, Todd, do you notice the?
We just lost you, Rich.
Maybe if you turn off the video.
Or, or could you, could you type in your question as well? Could you type in your question into the chat feature? While we're waiting for Rich to reconnect, Todd, can I ask another clarifying question with respect to other, with respect to other rebates that the town has offered? So with respect to the battery powered leaf blower rebate, for example, and the tree, our tree canopy program, what is the nature of the town's rebates in those cases? Do we offer 50% up to a certain amount?
Todd, you're on mute, Todd.
Sorry about that. The private canopy tree maintenance program reimburses a resident or homeowner 75% of the costs for eligible tree maintenance activities up to a maximum of $1,000 per residence for fiscal year. The battery powered blower offered. offered. Fifty percent of the cost of, of the actual blower and related equipment. So they were based on receipts. So they're based on receipts submitted by the residents and it's seventy five percent of the cost for tree maintenance and fifty percent eligible tree maintenance and fifty percent of the cost for battery powered blowers and related equipment.
Right. But in both cases, the residents would have, you know, they have expended the cost by the time they come to the town for.
Yes.
Okay. So then this program would work, basically we're following the same playbook.
Same thing, exactly. They would spend, they would engage if they wished with our consulting water engineer to identify potential rainscapes projects. They would then apply to the rainscapes program. They would get the initial site assessment, get preliminary approval. They would proceed if they needed technical assistance to, to retain such assistance and then design the program, get approval from rainscapes, implement it. And then they would come to us at the end of that process. Once they had the rebate from the county and the receipts, they were provide both of those, the town, we could see what the total project cost was. We could see how much the county rebated and we would match fifty percent.
Effectively last money in.
Correct. Really, it's a rebate, not a, yeah, reimbursement, really.
Rich, do we have you back?
I hope so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I, I wanted to follow on Irene's comment about the maintenance of, of these. And does Todd, do you know if the county, when they provide their rebate, do they have the homeowner sign in a, what I'll call a maintenance agreement that says they will maintain these systems?
I don't know that, Rich. I'll have to look, I, I have to look into the, into the program guidelines to see if they do that. I believe there is some form of a maintenance requirement and an ongoing inspection, if I'm not mistaken. I'd have to check on that though and let you know, because I don't know it off the top of my head.
Even if the county doesn't, I think Irene's thought is, is, is correct. A lot of the times it's the maintenance of these things that cause them to stop being effective. So maybe we ought to have a maintenance agreement in, in, before we give them the money. It says, you know, you will maintain this. I don't know how we would enforce it, but just having it there may make them spur them on to maintain those systems.
Right. I, I'd be afraid if we put it, the onus on us to do that, it might be overwhelming on staff resources to.
I wouldn't suggest we enforce, I don't know how we would enforce it or would enforce it. But just having them sign it in and of itself creates the expectation on their part that they're going to have to maintain it.
Yeah, I'm looking through the FAQs right now to see whether or not post rebate rewards and responsibilities. The property owner agreement permits access to your property by county staff to conduct an inspection of your project every three years. They have to sign a property owner agreement that requires them to maintain it. It's apparently the county staff will inspect it every three years. If you enroll in the WQPC credit program that can substitute for the in-person inspection by county staff for the follow-up inspections and inspection access will be limited to looking only at the rainscapes projects or others, or other stormwater management projects installed on the property to verify that they're still in place and functioning as intended. As you're expected to keep your project reasonably maintained and properly functioning throughout the year and for the duration. Maintenance needs generally decrease in two to three years for planted projects. So there is a inspection agreement that the property owner sign.
So we can just make sure we get a copy of that report.
Yeah, we just piggyback on that.
Exactly. We can ask for inspection reports just from, from, from DEP.
Okay.
Dan.
Dan, you had another comment?
Just a, a quick comment and Todd, you're making reference to this, but if the rest of the council is not aware, maybe you could comment about the homeowner tax rebate that is, is one of the other attractants for people to do such a project.
Right. I'm not, the water quality protection charge, you mean?
Yes.
Right. I, I don't know a lot about it, Dan. I don't.
Okay. I'll just, I can just comment that based on what I've heard that, you know, the resident does this project. They get a, they can get a rebate on their property taxes. It's not a huge amount, but it is some amount. And that's one of the reasons why there's this verification for maintenance purposes. Because if the homeowner is going to continue to get the tax rebate, it may be just a few hundred dollars a year. But for them to continue to get it, they have to be able to show that the project continues to be functional.
Thanks, thanks. I, I knew it was generally that gist, but I wasn't sure about the exact provision.
It's not a big number, but it's something that might, might interest some people.
Okay. Thank you, Dan, for that. I'd like to, like to, I think, get a vote from the council. But before I do, I would ask just one more time to consider up to an amount that is not a hundred percent. And I'll suggest eighty-five percent. If it turns out, as you were saying, Irene, that the mechanics of how this is done means that the county will not be reimbursing at all, then maybe this becomes moot. In other words, the reimbursement rate is less than whatever percentage we might put in, in which case that's not the ceiling effect of anyway. But in terms of the optics of how this program looks to the community, it's just, I think, odd to me to have a subsidy that says explicitly as part of our resolution or a part of our approval that we're prepared to reimburse an amount that could potentially pay for a hundred percent of the project. I, that, that just bothers me. So I would, I would ask, I don't really want to go through a formal vote and amendment process if I can avoid it. But I would ask if people could consider, and I'd be happy to put it, say, at eighty-five percent. But I say it may not, it may never bind anyway, in which case it doesn't matter. But just in terms of how we discuss these things with our residents, I would feel more comfortable if we're able to say that residents are still expected to have some skin in the game.
And I think that also to follow up on that, Barney, and I agree with you. I think it's probably an important provision to include and it's pretty consistent with what our other programs provide.
Yeah, without that eighty-five percent would be a lot. I mean, to the point that you've all made, this is a, almost a public good. So we're reflecting that by having the percentage of contribution from the household be a lot less than in some of the other programs. And arguably, there's a public good to supporting the, the maintenance of tree, of canopy trees. There's a public good to component to the leaf blower subsidy, but I think eighty-five percent is still.
Just to flesh it out a little bit, then that would mean that regardless of the size of the project, eighty-five percent. So if it's a four thousand dollar project or a twenty thousand dollar.
Fifteen percent has to come from the homeowner.
Sorry, Joe. So are you thinking still fifty percent? Are you saying that it would cover up to eighty? Because it could be different amounts.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is if the project is a four thousand dollar project and the county somehow decides to match up or go up to three thousand and then we are able to give that thousand, then are we saying that we would give, you know, five hundred or five fifty and they would be required to pay the four fifty remaining?
Okay, that's what I'm saying. If that, if that's okay with.
The full county amount, then.
Well, that's.
Then that's that. Okay. Sorry.
It's a bit of a or statement at the end. Okay.
We, we would just, yeah, the county would reimburse at its rate. It's usually a third to a half. And then we would have the total cost of the project, what the county rebate was and the differential up to eighty-five percent is what we pay.
Yeah.
Up to eighty-five percent.
Total.
Or fifty percent of the, yeah, yeah. So it has to be an or.
Yeah, right.
A statement.
Right.
I would, I would, for, from the resident's point of view, I would make it as simple as possible.
Yeah.
So if we feel that, you know, no subsidy, regardless of where it comes from, should exceed eighty-five percent of the project, then people know that, okay, they could get up to some amount, but there's a county formula and they could come to the town. I mean, it's just like, also, if you, you're going to pursue a tree, you've got to fix a tree on your private property. You don't know how much it's going to cost. It could cost three thousand or four thousand dollars. But you know, you're going to get seventy-five percent of it back, I guess, from the town, right? So in this case, it would be the same. You're going to build a rain garden. It could be ten grand. You know, the maximum amount you could get could be seventy-five percent of that covered. But you don't know yet the county's formula. So I guess we should say, you know, the town will provide half of whatever the county provides, not to exceed a total subsidy of eighty-five percent.
That's the best line. The total subsidy combined in county and town subsidy.
Is there, is there a motion for that to some?
So I move that we institute this program. And the town staff, of course, will flesh out more details, but that we prepare to have our own rainscapes rebate program such that the town would provide a rebate of up to fifty percent of the county's rainscapes rebate, but that the total amount of subsidy received by a resident would not exceed eighty-five percent of the total cost of the project.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous consent. Great. Thank you very much. Good, good. I'm very glad we're going to be supporting this program. Good work. Okay, at this point, I'd like to.
Sorry, one thing we didn't do was put that limit of one hundred thousand dollars on it. As part of that motion.
Oh, all right. Do you want to amend the motion?
Amend the motion for one hundred thousand.
Total ceiling. Okay. Second?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Officially added to the motion. Thank you for raising that. I mean, that's what, that's why we have a good treasurer right here to make sure. Okay, good discussion. We now like to have a time, opportunity for something which came to light when we've had a lot of discussions over the last many months dealing with issues regarding the station, the fire station at Bradley and Wisconsin, which is not the subject of work tonight, but realized that we as a council really have not had an opportunity to learn what we think we should know about the fire, various firehouses in our vicinity that provide such a very important service to our town. And so we wanted to give an opportunity tonight to the two town representatives, John Beal and John Byrd, who have so graciously been serving on behalf of the town for years in respect to the Chevy Chase Fire Department right across Connecticut, which actually is the fire department that probably comes into our town more often than practically anybody else. And so I would very much like, we wanted, we wanted to invite them to be here tonight. John Byrd is here in person. John Beal is appearing on the screen to give us a presentation of the work they do and how they work for, on behalf of the town. And do you want to introduce the administrative head? I understand. He's also here. George, okay, George Monk, who's the administrative manager of the firehouse is also here. Thank you, George, for being here. So I'll turn it over to John and John. But John Byrd, if you wish to speak, it'll be necessary to use the podium here or George, if you wish to. But I don't know if either of you guys have any introductory remarks, but thank you very much for coming tonight and briefing us.
As Barney said, I'm John Byrd. I'm the president of the Chevy Chase Fire Department and a town resident. I have with me George Monk and John Beal on, on the screen there. John's also a resident of the town and a, a member of the board. I guess to give you a little bit of background of Chevy Chase Fire Department, Chevy Chase Fire Department was founded in nineteen twenty-seven. Moved into its current location in nineteen thirty-one. We got the land from the Chevy Chase Land Company. They built the, the facility at that point and we've been there ever since. In the nineteen eighties, we became the first and only hazmat station in the county. And in nineteen, in the nineteen nineties, we add, add in addition to the station to house a, a larger hazmat vehicle was the main reason for that. And we had, we added a few other things, but that was the main reason. Last year in negotiations with the Bethesda Chevy Chase Fire Rescue Squad and the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue Service, along with the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue Association, we agreed to house an ambulance, a BCC ambulance at the station. It's been there just over a year. It's seemed to be working very well. They get a lot of responses, a lot of calls. So we've been happy with that. As you probably know, the ward, the board's there to represent the communities that we, that we service. We have three, three representatives from every community. There's ten communities that we, that is in our first due area. We never pretty much have three representatives, but that's, that's the goal. It's, so, and, and then that way we can ensure that we, we know what the, what the town and, or the community is concerned about. And we can pass anything on to the fire chief or vice versa. If there's an issue that comes up. Twenty-five years ago, they talked about downsizing some of the fire departments. And we were able to get the towns and the communities involved and, and kill that so that you, you would still have the, the service that you've been used to. So those are kind of things that, that is important to the station and the communities. As far as Station Seven goes, and Chevy Chase Fire Department only has one station, as, as you know, or, or don't know. Bethesda has three. It has the one that you just spoke of at Wisconsin and Bradley, but it also has Station Twenty-six out on Old Georgetown Road. It has Station Twenty out on Democracy Boulevard. But based on the area that we were in, there was, wasn't really an opportunity to expand. So, so we have the one station and at the station, we have a, what they call a paramedic engine. A number of years ago, maybe eight or 10 years ago, the, the county started to try and put paramedics on all the engines. And the idea was that most times the engine was the first arriving vehicle. So what they wanted with, with the first arriving vehicle, they'd have a paramedic and he would be able to stabilize the situation. And then they would send an ambulance and the ambulance would, would transport. So they've been doing that. We've had a, a paramedic on our engine for a number of years now and it's worked out very well, actually. I think it was a great thing to do. But besides that, we're thrilled to have the ambulance there. I think that it's also helps us a lot. We also have a hazmat vehicle, a utility vehicle, and of course, like we said, the ambulance. Activities, John, John and Beal had made, collected some information about the kind of activities we do, the responses we have. And John, if you could maybe talk to that a little bit.
Yes, I'd be happy to. We, I've got some data for the first six months of twenty twenty-two. The station received eight hundred and fourteen calls, a hundred and twenty-five of them were on the Beltway. Station Seven covers the Beltway. The inside loop we cover to Georgia Avenue and the outside loop we cover to, is it Wisconsin or Old Georgetown? I think it's.
Seventy Spur.
Seventy Spur. And so that, that obviously to, to do it, to do the inner loop towards Wisconsin Avenue, we'd be in the, fighting the oncoming traffic. That's not desirable. And the split between those, for whatever it's worth, is about, is, is just slightly larger on the inner loop. And the curves are a little tighter on the inner loop. Maybe that's the reason. Also, John mentioned the hazmat, one of only two in Montgomery County, and it had twenty-four runs during the hazmat runs during the, the first half of the year. And some of them were in our town. The kinds of, would you be interested in the kinds of things that we respond to?
Yes, and especially in the town.
Okay, these are all things that we responded to. I shouldn't say we, because the firefighters respond. The ambulance from BCCRS responds. We, we sit in the boardroom once a month, so we don't respond. But the incidents that they responded to, gas odor, stroke, wires down, heart problem, seizure, collision, fire in a microwave, broken gas line, smoke, fire charcoal grill, fire trash, cardiac arrest, was, person was dead on arrival, an antifreeze leak. fire trash, cardiac arrest, uh, was the person who was dead on arrival, uh, an antifreeze leak, uh, butane, tree on wires. That was the one at Meadow and Tornapple. Uh, another DOA dead on arrival, a vehicle fire and a gas leak. So you'll see that house fires are not something that is the bread and butter of of our fire station or any other fire station. Uh, it's a whole array of things that require emergency responses. Uh, something else you might be interested in knowing is that you have two stations, as you've already mentioned, that cover the town. Uh, that's not quite accurate. Uh, we have a first due area that's approximately a triangle with all of Connecticut, most of east-west, and then sort of a meandering diagonal line between the two, running from Bradley and Connecticut and ending up around Bethesda Chevy Chase High School. So uh, that's the area covered by Station Seven, and the remainder of the town is covered by Station Six as the first due. But the reality of it is that if you call for the for the fire service or you call nine-one-one and it's for a medical problem or a fire, one of these things I mentioned, uh, the dispatcher will look at their board and they will have right on their screen the closest available unit that is available. It's in service. It's got the staff, and that's what they said. So it may be from Station Seven, it may be from Station Six, it may be from Station Twenty. It's it's the the fastest one to get on the scene. So even though we have a first due area, uh, what you'll get is not waiting around for Station Seven to get back from the Beltway and show up at your house, but you'll get the quickest response the county can provide. The county's just done a really great job with their dispatching and and getting the right equipment to the right place. And it's really impressive for a house fire. I don't know if you've ever seen how that works, but they dispatch everything under the sun. And then the engine that's first on the scene will let them keep coming, or the engine will start backing down the size of the response. You know, it's somebody's charcoal grill. It's not up against the house and 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 they won't have the full response of ladder trucks and multiple engines and ambulances and battalion chiefs and, uh, turning our quiet little streets into a, looks like a, some kind of a uh, battle zone. So, uh, that pretty well concludes what I wanted to cover, John. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Um, in addition to the the calls, we do some community outreach. We have an open house every year, except that the last two years because of COVID, we haven't had it. Uh, and actually, when the the firefighters go on call, they they do little things like, uh, they they may see some children, they they give them a hat or whatever, just to get them in involved and and make them feel that, uh, you know, this is a good thing that we're there. So we do that. And some of the things we're we're, uh, doing right now, they're doing a lot of construction north of us on, uh, the Chevy Chase Lake. Uh, we're looking at how that affects, uh, our response times, you know, because there'll be more traffic, et cetera. And I just wanted to bring up, since we're here, uh, the four-H Center that's been sold. And I I I think you're aware that, uh, we've asked, uh, the firefighters have asked to use that for training, training purposes up there. And if they if the 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 new owners come to you and and ask for your support, we'd appreciate it if you would give that support.
You want to burn the place down? Is that the idea?
Well, no open fires. Uh, they'd be, uh, doing, you know, training that's, you know, they they don't get an opportunity to go into a building that 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 you can do things to and maybe break a door down or, you know, do some things that that is good training for them. And, uh, but they wouldn't do anything that would, uh, you know, affect the town per se. So so anyhow, we we would appreciate any any assistance with that that you can give us. Other than that, I think, uh, I'll open it to questions. Is there anything I missed, George, John?
Just just briefly.
George, you have to stand up, please, and and use the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Briefly, the, um, and training at the four-H Center would not include any fires. That's not not allowed by. And also no water. Uh, but the rest of it, searching through those rooms and the buildings are things that would be very valuable to them.
Right.
So.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Questions? Colleagues, my colleagues, any questions? Anyone to go over?
Joel, please.
Sure, yeah. Great presentation. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Five calls a day on average? Four to five calls a day?
Five call a day would, yeah, that's probably an average in it.
Can you sort of share with us what that looks like in real time? And and how do you manage the flow and 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 how many ancients do you have? Just a little more.
Well, uh, normally, if it's, say, it's, uh, it calls where the engine goes out, and the engine will go out on on basically any call, except if it's for, uh, basic life support, we'll just send the ambulance at this point. But when when dispatcher calls, you know, and and they have a whole system where it comes into the end of the fire station and, you know, they know that with chimes and they tell them who who's going out and so forth. Then they run it, they run that call at that point. And depending on what it is, there may be other vehicles coming too, as John had pointed out. But if it's a a routine call, they'll go out and and as long as it's routine, they'll resolve whatever it is, come back to the the fire station. If a call comes in in the meantime, they'll they'll respond from wherever they are. They don't have to come back to the station. And so they're they're just busy all the time. Whenever a call comes in and it's for them, they're out the door. And we've, I've watched them for many, many years, and they basically get out of the station within a minute, really. So that it, when they get a call and they get notified, once they get notified, they're out of the station in a minute. They're very good at it. Just just to let you know, all one other thing is that at at our station, Chevy Chase doesn't have any volunteers that are line line people, actually firefighters. We have the board, and that's basically our volunteers. Every other, there's nineteen local fire departments, all nineteen, all of the other nineteen have volunteers to some degree. Not not, some have many more than others. The two biggest ones, I believe, uh, actually, maybe I should throw in three biggest ones. Bethesda Chevy Chase Rescue Squad, uh, Wheaton Rescue Squad, and the Rockville Volunteer Fire Department. They have the most, uh, responding, uh, volunteers. Uh, so.
By the way, Scott Shakler, who's, uh, involved in Chevy Chase Fire Rescue Army, Bethesda Fire Rescue is here on the listening end.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess my question I would have is, uh, first of all, I have had a visit of the firehouse. I was impressed. I actually have a fire pole. And the bunkhouse is right above, and you guys can go right down that pole and get out in no time at all.
Yeah, yeah, I was I was impressed to see that. I was speedy you could be. The, um, I guess the question I would have is, are there any issues? Is there anything that you're concerned about? Do you feel you have the right equipment? Is there anything that is needed? Or are there any issues that you would wish to make us aware of?
Uh, we have no real issues at the moment. Uh, the, uh, the 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 current county executive has been very supportive of the fire department. Uh, the the current chief is is, uh, I think we've gotten along with him very well. You know, a lot of times there's a little friction between volunteers and and the paid and and so.
You've solved that problem.
They seem to.
Not having any volunteers.
They seem to have solved a lot of it anyhow. So anyhow, uh, from our point of view, uh, you know, just monitoring what's going on with our response times because of the new, the increase in traffic, things like that. But we have no, uh, real issues. As far as equipment goes, uh, if if we were to get a piece of equipment, we would have to staff it. We don't have any volunteers. We couldn't staff it. Uh, that's why Bethesda staffs their their ambulance, uh, and with volunteers that they have, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Please, go ahead.
So you mentioned earlier about Chevy Chase Lake and kind of assessing, given the increased density there. And of course, with the senior living development, there'll be even more density. Um, how are you assessing, well, maybe like, when will the report be out, if you will, like, okay, given what's, maybe you haven't seen what they're thinking about for the senior living community. Maybe you have. We're happy to share what they've shared with us so far, if that will help in your analysis. But with both projects going on on both sides of Connecticut Avenue for you, um, that's something that we're thinking about to make sure and to to Barney's good question about like, what? What help would you need around that? Yeah.
Uh, I think we would need to wait and see what what's going to happen. Uh, we we want to wait and see uh, what's going to happen with all the the buildings that they're ready to open down there. Uh, you know, there's talk about expanding and and redoing buildings on the west side, uh, also. And there's, they're always always talking about maybe taking the, uh, our our neighbor, the the library.
Yes.
Putting, uh,
Yep.
housing in there. So all those things will will add to traffic. And I I think what what we're doing is we're just trying to wait to see what those final decisions are and also see what the impact of the current, uh, filling of all those, uh, homes down there. And at that point, if we need to, uh, go forward with something, then then and then maybe we would want to come back to the the town and and ask for some support on that.
Okay. Um, the town has some very narrow streets and, uh, parking, people park on both sides. Sometimes there's just one side of the street. Do you ever do an audit, say, of the different communities that you're covering to say, okay, this, you know, our trucks can get through um, in in in, God forbid, an emergency, right? Uh, given the present, um, situation with parking and narrow streets.
We we don't do an audit per se. If, uh, you know, if if a community asks us to come in and look at something, we'll come in and and look at it and advise uh, things like speed bumps, which we're very good at, are a problem for us. I mean, honestly, it slows down the response.
Right.
Uh, and but you have to make the decision, which is more important, you know? And obviously, you don't want somebody getting hit with a car. So I mean, you you got to have a trade-off there, but but those things are are important to what we do. But as far as the narrow streets, you've driven across Connecticut Avenue, right?
That's where you really have narrow streets.
That's where we have the problems normally. We don't normally have problems in this area. I've never heard the firefighters come back and say, you know, we're in the town and there was a problem. But I have heard them come back from the other areas and go, you know, we had to run over a sign to get to where we were going or, you know, uh, we had to get up on the sidewalk to go where we're going.
Okay.
Whatever. So that does come up, but we haven't had that issue with the town.
Any other questions? George, okay. Um, this one that I thought of, uh, first of all, with the, uh, the ambulance, is that twenty-four seven?
The ambulance is actually seven till eleven.
Seven in the morning, eleven. So otherwise, it's the BCC Rescue Squad. Is that what?
It would, right. They 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 move it back to the rescue squad at eleven until seven the next morning.
They move the ambulance back or?
They move the ambulance.
Oh, I see. So the ambulance is goes back and forth, toggles between the two.
Correct.
Locations.
Correct.
But that, but one way or the other, the town has twenty-four seven coverage with ambulance.
Yes, I'm, uh, Bethesda Chevy Chase Rescue Squad, you know, for a long time was the only ambulance in town, basically. Uh, and now there's a number of them. I mean, Glen Echo has ambulance, Bethesda has an ambulance. We now have an ambulance.
The other, the other quick question, rising from yours, I mean, is when Corso Chevy Chase gets built, it'll have four to five hundred more residents, uh, and obviously elderly. Uh, so one can imagine the medical issues will go up. Uh, have you begun to think about the planning for that and what would be required?
Actually, I I don't see that actually changing what what our dynamic is. Uh, we've been dealing with, uh, the, uh, what is it, eighty-one hundred?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one oh, yeah, eighty-one hundred, I think, is the one.
Oh, right.
Across the street, uh, four-star, I guess it is.
Yep.
Uh, we've been dealing with that for many years now. Uh, we get some crazy calls over there. You know, they, uh, based on, uh, on, uh, insurance and so forth, the the a lot of times they they won't pick up a patient. They'll call us and we'll have to go over and pick the patient up. And with the ambulance there now, it's it's helped us. We don't, we don't have as many calls, ambulance to pick up a lot of that.
Well, just nothing to be resolved tonight, but just thinking ahead that that could be a substantial additional load and something that we'll have to revisit at that time in terms of resources. Okay, anything else?
I I just, one one last tiny question, which I've always been curious about. How is it for the ancients to navigate our town?
To navigate the town?
Yeah, I mean, like, like anything that we should be aware of when driving through, any any impediments that are problematic? Are these speed bumps too much? Like, what what's your, uh, what's your take? What do people talk about?
Like I was saying, I I've never heard a complaint about the town per se. When speed, when the speed bumps go in, I do hear people, you know, from there going, you know, you you're just slowing us down, you know? You were, we're not going to be there as quickly as we were before. Uh, but, uh, no, from from that standpoint, I haven't had any issues with that.
Great.
Um, the town's, I know sometimes it's pretty tight in certain areas. I think they do, they do from time to time, drive through the areas just to drive through. You know, they may have a new person or whatever, and they want, they want to drive through and make sure everybody knows where everything is. And so if there were issues, we would hear about it.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
For joining us this evening. Good, thank you. All right, um, turning to the next item of business, we have the variance hearings. Uh, and we're going to start with respect to seventy-two oh eight Oak Ridge Avenue. Uh, Ron, uh, do you want to walk us through for the benefit of our uh, our residents, the process that we undertake when we have take up variances?
Sure, thank you. So a staff report has been entered into the record, and the town council has had the opportunity to review the application in advance. The hearing will begin with the applicant's presentation. And please note, the council has again had the opportunity to review the application, so the applicants don't need to restate everything that's in their application, but please feel free to address what you'd like. After that, the council will ask its questions of the applicant and or staff. Following the council's questions, anyone else in attendance that has a question or a comment will have an opportunity. After that, the applicant will have a brief opportunity for rebuttal. Then the record will close. The council will deliberate and entertain a motion directing me to write a decision, either approving or denying the variance. Please note, if the variance is approved, the approval is not final till it's reduced to writing. So you can't get your permit until that decision's issued, but it doesn't take too long, usually about a week, two weeks. So with that, is Bill or Joanna Walk present?
Great, okay, welcome. Well, please go up to the podium, and you're welcome. We have all reviewed.
Yeah, Matt McDonald is also a member of the government.
Oh, okay. Hi, Matt.
Hi, I'm Matt McDonald. I'm I'm the architect, one of one of the two architects. Uh, so I'm on, you know, calling in here on the Zoom to help out with with the presentation.
Very good. Well, I, as as Ron mentioned, we've all read the application, so don't feel the need to go through it in detail. But by all means, take the opportunity to make any overview comments you wish to or anything in particular that you want to make sure that we are aware of. Uh, so this is your opportunity.
Sure. So I think on on a high level, then, since you've.
Before I speak, is that was that the way, or do you want to say anything first? You are the applicant, so I want to make sure that we're hearing from you. And I'm sorry, you're going to have to use some of the microphone here.
Yeah, so Bill Walk again, um, and really this, I'm kind of anticipating that we'll have a dialogue, you know, with ourselves and and Matt being able to describe some of the, you know, significant technical details. Uh, but fundamentally, you know, the interesting thing about our town is the fact that all our lots are very unusually shaped. And and we seem to have scored the jackpot on finding one that's even more unusually shaped than the others, uh, shaped essentially like a pie, uh, with also a significant topographical change from the main street up to the house. Um, that has created multiple challenges on, you know, on how we actually situate the house. Additionally, in front of the house, the street curves, and then, uh, given that the street curves, that the side lots both angle in, then finding, you know, an efficient placement to put our house and to expand as our as our needs and have expanded over the last twenty-five plus years that we've been in town. Uh, you know, kind of understanding that topology, making the house more usable, more usable as we've evolved, uh, has caused us to look at how do we, you know, fit within the basic framework to, uh, improve the livability. And to that end, as we redesigned, um, some of the house, some of the existing. And to that end, as we redesigned, um, some of the house, some of the, the existing side porch that we intend to change, which happens to be a brick thick, uh, not necessarily the most efficient. And, and one would not build this way today because it's not even an insulated porch at this point. We've looked at how do we redesign that side so that we keep, in keeping with the appearance of the house, picking up on, you know, the traditional, uh, appearance of the house, uh, but also enhancing the, the floor space to make it, you know, more efficient for us. And, and in so doing, and in the design, working very closely with the architects, we found we needed to do a slight, really a modest ask on the side lock setback in order to fit an efficient, you know, structure, uh, there on, on the side of the house. And, and I think, you know, as, as was shown, because of the geometry of our particular lot, we actually, you know, kind of only have like a, essentially like a triangle of, of the back portion of the requested addition that requires the variance that gets us, you know, towards the seven, well, it gets us beyond the, or inside this, the town's nine point three foot setback, but still keeps us within the county, um, setback requirement. So, so that's the one ask. And the second is related to establishing a front porch to, you know, make essentially the, um, the house more accessible and, and, and give some additional living space, given there's not, you know, tons of other useful space. But anyway, making that, um, front porch addition and then in so doing, because of the height of the house, the height of the land, it takes essentially more steps to enter the house. And that forces us to have the steps go into what is essentially the front, uh, lawn setback. As it works out, because we have such a topographical change from the, from the front of the house now to where even the steps will be, I think from those on the street, it will not appear any different. Because as it is the front of the house, I believe is something on orders of thirty nine feet from, from the front anyway. So even though we're coming in, we're still well, well away from what is, I think, more traditional and even the twenty five foot that others have based on where they're located. So essentially those are the two asks. In our case, the extra depth of the step essentially because you need, you know, obviously an approach to a house and the width of the steps push us into that. And, uh, the diagram there that is projected shows quite clearly those areas.
Right, so we saw that. Those points were highlighted in the materials. Good.
So those are the, so that's essentially the fundamental requests we have to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, are there any questions for my colleagues about this variance application? I can't see the screen at the moment. Uh, so I can't see Joy or. There we go. Okay, now I can see Joy and Rich. Any question? Rich, this is actually in your side yard, right?
It's in my backyard and, uh, when do we get to, uh, move the motion to approve?
Well, I guess you get along well with your neighbors. That's nice to hear. Okay, but first of all, we have to ask if there are any comments. Could you please, uh, you know, let's keep the screen this way. Are there any comments, uh, or questions from any residents? I don't see any. Okay. So with that, Ron, we close the proceeding. Is that right? Go into our consultation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions or any further thoughts or issues from any of my colleagues? Okay. Then may we entertain a motion for approval of this variance?
I move to approve the, uh, the variance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anonymously approved. Enjoy your edition.
Yes.
Uh, I, I have to say. But I think you are, just looking at, just looking at your lot as a pie shape, we said, my heavens. Uh, but I should also share with you, you wouldn't possibly know this, but, but your, your front yard has been a poster child in a way. When I first joined the council, I got involved in an issue where a resident was claiming that a wall that had been built a long time ago had been built by the town. And therefore the town was responsible for replacing it. And, and it had to be the town because the, the, the house was so far above the street that obviously the town would have had to do that when it platted the street. And I went around the town and said, well, sure, that's true. And that there are places that there are really steep front yards, which do not have retaining walls. And I came to your house. And I saw that indeed you, you managed to, or the town managed to, uh, plaid out the street there without putting in a retaining wall. So that was, that was helpful for my case anyway. I won't say, I'm, I'm sorry. Oh, I never. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation and enjoy, enjoy your edition.
Then Bill, I think you, uh, you did my job for me tonight.
Thank you for joining. Okay, very good. Good evening, both of you. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
No, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead. I was calling the next case, but you're doing the same.
Please, let's go to the next case. I think they're appearing virtually. Is that right? The Bogarts?
Yes, good evening.
Okay.
So yeah, I'm Mary Catherine Bogart and my husband, Peter Bogart, and I are applying for a variance, uh, for three items in the front yard of our house at forty one thirty seven Woodbine Street. Guess I'll share screen. Okay, so, um, we're, this is our house. It's located at the corner of Woodbine and Oak. We are asking for a variance to, um, essentially build two retaining walls in the front yard. Um, add a guard rail or railing to the lower of the two walls and add a parking pad. These photographs, you can see at the house, um, there are some walls in the yard. They're in poor repair. When we bought the house about a year ago, we inherited a front yard that mostly had deferred maintenance and some bad landscaping. So we're hoping to remedy that. You all have seen the, um, drawings, but this is the existing site plan here. You can see the driveway here on the east is a shared driveway of our neighbors at forty one thirty five Woodbine Street. Uh, we were hoping, we have no off-street parking. Um, while there is a driveway, it's about seven feet wide. And we have a garage constructed at the same time as the house in nineteen thirty two. And if any of you have one of these original garages, you know, you can't, you know, they were built for a Model T. You can't fit a modern car in there. Um, likewise, we can't fit two cars side by side, um, up here where the driveway kind, kind of widens out at the top. So moving on, here's the proposed plan. Um, we hired a landscape architect to help with this plan. The driveway would utilize the existing curb cut. This is really kind of the only logical place that we could get, um, one off-street parking space because of the grade change on our lot and still use the existing curb cut. And you can see these are the two walls. I think at their highest point, the lowest wall is around four feet. Um, and it tapers off as the yard levels out to the east. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm trying to keep it brief. I know we're the last one here in the variance section, so I don't want to keep everyone here too long.
Thank you, Mary. By the way, when you speak further, could you please make sure you're talking to the microphone? There's some reverberation coming from your unit, so it's a little bit hard. But not a hundred percent, uh, but I think it was good enough to get the drift.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me turn it over to my colleagues first, uh, for questions they may have. And Joy, I saw that your hand went up. Uh, so please, uh, go to the floor.
Yes, um, thank you. And thanks, Mary Catherine, um, for your presentation. Um, I apologize if I missed it, um, but I did want to ask, um, if your plan to add that parking pad includes a pervious surface?
Um, so right now we anticipate doing the driveway in gravel. There may be a small area of paving here. I don't know if you can see my mouse on the screen, but at the lower corner, there may need to be some paving in that area just to retain the gravel. Because it's, I mean, our lot is like thirty seven percent slope, so it's very challenging. But we are trying to stay, I, I believe there's a page, yeah, here's our impervious surface calculation. So we're not including the driveway because we anticipate doing that in gravel.
Okay. Okay. And then the other point that you made about the, the existing retaining walls, which you said are in poor repair and probably need replacing anyway. Um, I think as I understood from reading your application, that the new walls that you propose are lower than the ones that, that are existing now, even though the ones that exist now also don't comply with the town's current code. Is that right?
Yeah, so there's, there's two types of walls now. You can see there's a dry-laid stone wall. Those are, I don't know, maybe two feet tall. Uh, then there's the brick wall and that is at least five feet tall. I was suggesting that the new walls would be lower than this brick wall. The site needs retaining walls. Um, the dirt is settling and if you walk past our house on a rainy day, you will find molten dirt through the sidewalk. Um, the soil is just starting to give away, as you can see by these walls that are starting to crumble. And so we think we have the best solution by putting in two walls. Um, I think one is four feet and another one, two and a half to three feet.
I'm sorry, where the, you say there are two existing walls now, right? Is that what I heard you say, Mary?
Yes, so.
The, 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 the tall, higher retaining wall, just following up in your point, Joy, just want to make sure run this to ground. That's really where you originally had those trees and there's kind of that heart-shaped structure, is that?
Correct, right here, that heart-shaped brick section.
And, and that's, that's where that retaining wall is quite high, I guess even higher than four feet.
Correct.
But elsewhere, there, that second retaining wall is lower than four feet. Is that right?
Yes, adjacent to that and up here are some dry-laid stone walls. I, I don't know their exact height, but they're, they're lower.
Joy, did you have any other questions?
Um, well, actually, if I may follow up, so, um, so on your drawing of the proposed walls, or there's like a picture of the front elevation, um, that I saw. So I'm just trying to determine which wall is first. Is it the, you want to put the, the four-foot-high stone and then behind it is the one with the, with the gate or the guardrail? I can't tell which, which is which.
Sure. Um, so if you see the plan here, um, this, can you see my mouse when I move it?
Yes, yes.
Great. So there's the sidewalk. Um, this first wall, which has a series of Xs and lines on it, that represents the guardrail. So this is the taller wall, actually. This was the one, and you know what? I have to go back to where the measurements are to actually see what the height is. Two eighty-one, so base of all two eighty-one, two eighty-four. So this is the one that's almost four feet, three point nine six feet, to be exact. The lower one closest to the sidewalk. It still has a pretty good setback from the sidewalk. And then the second wall here is two eighty-nine to, this is about two and a half feet.
And so where would the shrubbery go?
So we anticipate landscaping, um, the entire front yard. I suspect up here we'll leave some area of grass. We have a small sun. Um, so we'd like a little bit of grass area. Um, but the landscape plan has not been fully fleshed out, but I do anticipate the area between the walls will be shrubbery or flowers or I, I think there's a tree shown tentatively. Yeah, here you go. Here, these are trees, the circles. And here they shown where they could, some hedges near the house and so forth.
Does that answer your question, Joy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure, please, go ahead.
Back to the drawing, um, so there's three, uh, kind of figures, that people, representing people that are, that are traversing the front yard. Uh, one is, is coming down the steps, um, from, uh, the front door. Uh, actually, I'm, I'm going to refer to another. I, I didn't see this particular drawing. It was one that just showed the landscaping and the retaining walls.
So did you want to have that up on this?
Yeah, uh, it, so it's the top part that shows if that could be enlarged a little bit. That'd be helpful.
The elevation drawing here.
Yeah, so those three figures, one is descending from the front door on the steps. One is outside the car and the car, on the parking pad. And then to the left, there's a person, um, on, walking along on the terr, on the terrace that's been created. Which is that secondary retaining wall that you're creating. Is that correct?
Yes, although, I mean, I don't know if the figure is walking on the wall per se, but yes.
I'm sorry, can't hear her too. Can you clarify? Is that person walking on this newly like kind of created terrace?
No, I think that person is shown for scale and it's meant to be just be walking here on this area. The lawn area here. The wall, the wall will not be meant to be walked on.
The wall will not be what, Mary? We couldn't quite hear that.
I'm, I'm so sorry. My sound is not very good. I'm not sure why. The wall is not intended to be walked on. It's simply a retaining wall to create these terrorist areas.
Okay, that's fine. And, but the, the guardrail will, is intended to be installed on top of the the first retaining wall, the one that's closest, the lower one, the one that's closer to the street, right? So, but, but is that retain, the way it shows on this schematic that this regard rail is going to effectively be lower than the secondary terrace. Is that correct?
In elevation, yes, that's how it's shown here. I mean, you need to under, well, it's an elevation drawing, so.
Okay, and then in between, what is the guardrail? And, um, that secondary retaining wall, I, if I understood your answer to Joy's question, it'll be, there'll be landscaping in between those two walls. Is that right? What is the function of the guardrail?
Sure, so because the wall is over, it's nearly four feet tall. Typically, a guardrail is recommended by the building code for fall protection. So that's why we're showing it. My understanding from talking with Dave Walton at the town is that the town does not require it unless there's a pathway there. But we have a ten-month-old son, um, children are apt to make obstacle courses out of everything. And we simply are looking for the railing and for fall protection, um, to put there. And just being a very risk adverse person, you know, we don't want to open ourselves up to liability if someone were to fall off that wall and injure themselves.
But it's the, the guardrail is on the wall that's the first wall, not the second wall, so.
That's one that's four feet high.
Yeah, but there's still a secondary retain, so I'm thinking about. No, I'm not understanding the safety argument on this. If, if it isn't on the.
If you were standing a, a, above the first wall and you look down to the sidewalk, it would be a four-foot drop. But if you're standing up here, it's just a two-foot drop looking down to this first landing. Does that make sense?
So two-foot drop is okay, but the four-foot drop is why you're concerned to put on the guard, the guardrail?
Right. And, and that falls back on the building code. That's just what they recommend. I, I think it's a thirty-some inch. I forget the exact amount, but.
More than thirty inches, the building code recommends a guardrail. I'm sorry, why is it recommended and not mandatory?
It's not recommended.
Why is it not mandatory? Ah, I see, okay. Right, okay. Right, okay.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Rich, did you have any questions or Joel? Just want to make sure we go around the horn.
No, I didn't have any, no.
Um, Mary, I have, I have a question, which is um the, well, I'm going to refer to the upper and the lower retaining wall. That's my nomenclature. Is the area between the two retaining walls to be entirely landscaped or is it just, or some of it just going to be grass?
Um, our hope is to landscape it. You know, for various reasons, we, I would prefer not to have grass.
All right. Now, I, I've had you considered um the idea that you might put the guard rail behind landscaping. In other words, if you were to have a series of bushes right along the lower retaining wall, putting the guard rail behind the bushes rather than in front of them, is that something that you have considered?
Um, yes, and I guess two thoughts for that is one, it becomes a bit of a maintenance issue. Um, you end up with a very small space that either myself or gardeners have to get in to prune and deal with the bushes. And then it still leaves open the idea that, you know, for example, a child could walk along that wall from the stair and fall off or jump off or whatever it is they may do.
So the guard rail is going to, the, the base of the guard rail is going to rise right from the top of the wall. Is that the idea?
That's the idea, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. All right, that's my question. Okay, then let's turn it to any other residents who are on the call. Can you take down your screen, please, Mary, so we can? Just want to make sure we can see the uh, maybe, maybe someone else has, okay, there, that's the screen I wanted to see, all right. Do we have any other com, uh, residents commenting on uh, on this variance request? I don't see any, okay. Now let me turn it back to uh the council and open it up for discussion. Anybody want to express a view? Okay, does someone want to make a motion then regarding this variance?
Yeah, I move to approve the variance.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, it's been approved.
Thank you very much.
I think, Mary, I will say this, this is one reason why we all looked very carefully at your application, which is that the town generally does not look for front yard fences. That's something that's important to the town as a whole. So when these come up, they do have to be extraordinary circumstances. Uh, but just expressing my personal view of the fact that you've got a four foot wall and a safety issue uh is certainly an important concern and we rec, realize that while it's not required, it is recommended. So we understand your concern for safety.
Right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, good. Enjoy the improvements. How long will it take to put all that in place?
That's a good question. Uh, we'll have to see what happens with the supply chain and, you know, how hard that is right now.
I should mention one other factor too, which also is pertinent, Ron, in terms of your write-up, which came from the application, that on-street parking at that particular corner is very difficult. Uh, and so the fact that they need the extra space uh off their driveway, to me anyway, just speaking as one council member, was one of the pertinent factors that led me to support their putting in that additional driveway space. And also as pertinent that, I think if I understood you right, Mary, that you're saying that that's going to be uh, uh gravel at the moment, right? So it's going to be pervious.
Correct, correct. Um, we're trying to avoid a water drainage plant.
Okay, that also mattered. I'm glad Joy raised that question.
And I appreciate that. That corner, there is one viable off-street parking space on our.
I'm sorry?
There's, there's only one space for one vehicle on our corner.
Yeah.
In front of our house because of the way it's configured with the stop sign and fire hydrants.
Right, understood.
So thank you.
Okay, all right. Good, enjoy. Thank you. I'd like to take a break for a few minutes and then we'll come back and carry on with our discussions. Thank you. So I just thought that in respect to the farm women's market, that before we consider the resolution, be, to just put in the context of the revised letter of intent, um, I sent around late last night uh an email uh enumerating the various points that I had seen and many of you had also referenced in our conversations as being improvements uh in what the county now was putting into the LOI. Uh, and I think foremost among those is the county stepping up with a further one and a half million dollars so that there's no remaining financial gap uh in this current budget. Uh, and uh that's certainly to the good. Also, a lot more of the town's money was focused on the park projects, which I think optically is something which uh a lot of residents care about, but also gives us more flexibility to potentially apply ARPA money uh to, to this project. Uh, as, as Joy knows very well from having her past work, uh, the ARPA money has to be allocated by December of twenty twenty-four and has to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. So any town money that goes against the work of the park on, on lot twenty-four should be safely eligible to be spent on that. Uh, but I would not so feel that's true for the project for money spent for the construction of lot ten. That will probably take place in twenty twenty-seven, so it would probably not be eligible for ARPA money. Design to that project might be, but not the actual construction. But nonetheless, those are all changes that are, that are very helpful. Um, and there are a number of other things that we saw that had annoyed us, such as the town having to thank everybody else, but nobody thanking the town. And at least that's now symmetrical. Uh, but anyway, there are a lot of things that are good, but I also highlighted several things that were issues and um uh, the, um, I did have a chance to have a conversation with Chris Conklin late this afternoon. And I typed up an email, which I, I don't sure that anybody has had a chance to review, but where I, I, in the issues and questions section, I highlighted his responses on a number of those points. Uh, and while not all perfect and there's obviously not, there's some things to work on, at least it gave me a general sense of comfort that he was acting and the county was certainly in good faith, wanting to push this forward and there was plenty of common ground. Uh, so I think that gives us a scope to, and he is looking for us to respond with our further markup. Uh, and something which I told him, I hoped we'd be able to do by the end of next week. Uh, Francois's carrier is gone until Tuesday of next week on vacation, so she won't be able to look at it till then. Uh, but what I thought I might do is do um markup to the best of my ability and get it to her attention so she would have it when she returns. And then share that with everybody and hopefully once we've all reviewed that and comfortable with it, we can get it off to her. As I said, like, the goal I'd like to have would be a week from tomorrow. Uh, but obviously if we need more time, we'll take more time. What is very pertinent is that um when I asked Chris about the timing of when they will advance the amendment to the CIP, Capital Investment Program, um, he said that they will send it, it's basically drafted already, but they will only send it up after the letter of intent has been executed. Um, so uh, I, I, I find it a little bit rich uh that after all the time it's taken for the county to come up with its money that, that uh they're now saying to everybody else, well, you better get your, you better get your signature in this LOI before we're going to formally ask the county council, but anyway, it's his device of trying to get everybody to, at the table. I guess it's all right. Uh, but.
Price of reliability.
Yeah, exactly. But in any event, um, I said to him, I, you know, the county council is essentially closed down for the rest of the summer. He said, you're right, nothing really makes any difference for the next six weeks, which goes to a point that you made, Irene, you're quite correct uh that, you know, this is not, not, not super urgent as much as we want to get it done. But I believe uh we would all concur that, that wanting the county to get that amendment up to the CIP, up to the county council in beginning of September uh at the latest is, is certainly important because we do want this county council to consider the matter. Uh, that's not to say the next county council will, would, would in any sense be opposed to it or, or, or not do it, but just it's a whole new education effort with a lot of new members. Uh, and I think if we can get it done with this county council, uh, that is very much to our advantage in terms of timing of the project. Now we know that Gabe Abram, uh, Abernathy, who's, who's the current president is very much in favor of this project and ready to push it forward as quickly as he can. So anyway, uh, I would like us to be able to turn this document around and get it back. Um, and um, the um, I think however, that, that the, I hope the way that we now have the draft resolution that you've seen, the one that uh Todd sent out yesterday, which has a few markups from, from the version that was in the pack. But, but the idea there was to update the resolution uh taking into account this latest revision, revised LOI that came across from Chris Conklin. Uh, so that we do not have to set as conditions some things that now have already been addressed in this revised version. So um, that's really, I guess, all that I have is by way of preamble and wanted to open it up for discussion with any questions or thoughts that any of you have.
Barney, as you were able to uh meet with Chris, are there, have meetings with Park, Parks and um EYA Bernstein also taken place about this newly revised letter of intent?
No, no, I've not talked to them.
To, to know if those meetings are also under, undergoing.
Right, uh, the only thing that Chris mentioned to me today was that we were the first to respond, that he's not heard anything from the other two.
Okay.
Yet. So I, and I also know that the Chuck Hathaway, who's the senior guy from Bernstein involved, is on vacation till late next week, I think.
Okay. So I, I, and, and what I've expressed to you uh separately is the way that the LOI was written, it doesn't look like it's undergone any county legal review.
Ah, that I have found out about. Those, I'm glad you raised that. Um, the, the um the attorney for the Department of Transportation, Vicky Gaul, G A U L, has been involved in this draft.
Okay.
Uh, and in fact, I, I, I mentioned to Chris when we spoke this afternoon that in respect to one issue that's still outstanding, and I know we all care very much about, which is the standing that the town will have in the event that anybody ever wants to change the status of these parks, that, that would occur, I suggest, suggested to Chris that Francois has talked to Vicky to find language that we could find acceptable and he thought that would work.
Okay.
Just um on the politics of it, I, I totally agree that the sooner we get this done before the change uh in, in the council and um potentially county executive, the better. I don't think we'll have any problem convincing a future council, but transitions create delays and dysfunction and then that opens up new windows and other dynamics, so best to push it through. We've gotten the support and, and um you know, I, I think, I think, I think that's a real critical priority to, to make sure it happens this fall.
I, I too am in support of, of this in terms of um, you know, moving this along, but I, I do see a couple of red flags. Um, one being the, there, that there is specific language, whether it's here in this um resolution uh or, or elsewhere, that I just don't want to put the town in a position where we're on the hook when they inevitably run over cost, over budget. And we're just considered this like, I don't know, ATM. Um, so I, there's a part of me that I fully understand the politics of it, definitely want the CIP to go through, but I also want to make sure there's a bit of a stronger language about, you know, don't, don't keep coming to these, to the town. Um, there's got to be, if this is such an, it is an important project, not only for the Bethesda, but for the county and effectively the state. Um, so I just feel like that language needs to be strengthened a little bit more. Um, and because Parks and uh EYA Bernstein haven't come back yet, I don't know what surprises might come out from their review of this and, and therefore concern about kind of jumping the gun and reviewing something and, and approving something that we'll have to kind of do the same thing in September potentially again. Do you know what I mean? Um, so yeah, that's where I'm at.
But I don't, just to address that, I think the what I hope is that the resolution is broad enough that it leaves room for us to allow negotiating on the LOI without finding ourselves in, at variance with the, in the resolution. But if we did find ourselves at variance with the resolution, we would then have to come back, you're right, and, and reconsider that. But I think the, the value of our voting tonight is again to establish more momentum, know that that's one more you know, marker down for this project. And frankly, I think if we are the first to come back with a markup of this LOI, that actually is a good thing. I, I think that gives us traction to say, here's the version that we really want others to sign on to. Uh, and, and uh, we've already found that helpful in respect to the language with the Parks Department by using their, having that conversation that we had with them and coming back with words of programming and partnership, which actually were memorialized in this. So I think it's to our interest actually to um come back with what we would like to see and then, and then hopefully uh find that the developers in Parks can agree to a lot of our language and then that, you know, again, puts more momentum behind it. So I, I don't think anything's fundamentally changed that, that the town is have been consistently a motor behind this project and I don't think that's going to change going forward.
So then there's just the outstanding question of don't keep coming back to.
Right, and I think, and, and Chris and I discussed it, but I agree, it's not clear yet. But I think we're going to have to work harder on that in the fall when we come to the definitive documents as to exactly how we discuss uh cost overruns. Um, I will mention that I, in my conversation today, I mean, it's careful, we're not negotiating, but just throwing out ideas and having discussion on issues. And I brought up the fact that the one party that really has not come to the table uh is the Bethesda Parking Lot District. And you all know that we'd long had an idea that the Bethesda PLD itself could have issued bonds or otherwise financially supported this. And, and uh, Chris is head of the Department of Transportation and Mark Elrich decided now they didn't want to do that. And that is part of the, you know, essentially a, a, a tool that has not been taken out of the toolbox. Uh, and so I, I brought that up with Chris today uh and said that might be a way to handle cost overruns uh and where you know, potentially if there were some, the county could purchase the garage with cash plus issue a note of some amount for the remain, whatever the shortfall is and that note would be paid back over a short period of time uh paid to the developers, but paid back with revenues from the parking lot district so that ultimately you have people parking in Bethesda paying for some fraction of this park, which I think makes a lot of sense and politically is acceptable. So actually, he, he didn't say no to that. He said, that's actually something that potentially is workable. But he said, then of course he pulled back and said, well, you know, he has to have discussion with everybody else, but anyway, at least it put that in motion. So to the point that you're saying, I think there will have to be a rich conversation about this. And I think there's also, and, and we ought to say this and be clear, we're on the record for this, that, that while we have hundred percent funding of this budget, uh, I think we all expect that there are going to be cost overruns because these projects always do have cost overruns and we're in a very inflationary period. And these cost numbers go back twelve months, so who's getting home? Uh, so I think we, we do understand there'll be some cost overruns here that we're going to have to grapple with. I fully acknowledge that.
Yeah, I, just to reinforce, uh, we're, we're gonna have to continue to be the engine of this one all the way through until the train enters the station, so. That's uh, I mean, I wish it wasn't that way, but, but then again, that's okay. I mean, this is uh, it's working. I don't have any good language recommendations on how to prevent the cost overrun from impacting us, but something leaning into the effect of any cost over runs must, there, I don't want to lean in to say we commit to it, but some kind of equitable sharing or something of that nature needs to get in there at the front end.
Well, on, on that point, Joel, um, when we revise the, the resolution for tonight, you'll see that we said that in the, in the, in the whereas's that the twenty-five percent level of town contribution against public money has been effectively met and therefore we no longer need it as a condition of, of the grant or a further grant. So what we were trying to say there was that it was, it was giving some comfort to this, to the, to the county that that the money that we appropriate is solid. It's not, it's not an up to number. It is what it is. But we're also making clear as a benchmark that that to us still seems like a reasonable number. And that's something which potentially we could carry forward if we choose to. We have to have a discussion of, of cost overruns if some other methods don't work out.
No, I'll just, thank you for that. I have had conversations with residents about this and, you know, specifically how I felt about the additional 500. And then also, but what about these cost overruns? I don't, you know, saying the same thing that I'm reiterating here, that I don't want the town to be on the hook for that. And I'm getting, this is a slippery slope. And so it's coming, not just to, you know, me, it's from various resident conversations.
Although if you stay as treasure, maybe it'll come under budget. Got a track record there.
Work miracles there.
Joy, Rich, do you have any comments?
Well, thanks Barney. I would just like to, you know, thank, thank you and Irene, our town staff and everyone who's been pushing to keep this issue moving. Because, you know, there are any number of, there it seems, there've been any other, any number of opportunities for this to kind of falter. And I, I guess I would just ask, you know, once we do get this approved, the, the amendment through, added to the CIP, you know, what else can we do as a town to continue to, you know, blow the horn for the benefit of this project? I mean, this is going to be the largest public park in Bethesda, which is arguably the economic engine of the county, if not the state. And it's just, you know, it's very important, I think, for the, you know, for all of downtown Bethesda. And I just feel like, perhaps it's because the, you know, the county executive is up for reelection and seems to be hanging by the, by his fingernails there. But, you know, I, I just think, I'm just asking, and maybe Joel, you also have something to offer in this case. What can we do to continue to keep this top of mind?
I think one of the main things is going to be this fall, our participation in the charrette process. You know, when we really get into the designing of the, of the amenities, which by the way, could look quite different than what we've currently seen in the, in the maps. The EYA has said that they're very close to picking a landscape architect. So they will be bringing on board someone that's done in cooperation with Parks. Parks gave them some names of people and they really respect to do quality work. And, and McLean said that they're very excited about someone they just interviewed. So, you know, we may see some very different ideas about amenities and so on coming down the pike. And I think the crux for us is going to be active participation in that process, both because we want to get it right from the perspective of what we think the town would like to see, but also in terms of generating that excitement. Wow, you know, this can really be a tremendous asset here, and I think that will be helpful. I also think this is one of the other potential solutions to cost overruns, which is that, that if, that the more exciting the park looks with good amenities, it should also make it easier for us to raise money from private sources who would wish to join and, and help realize that. So there, it may be more of a, I, I, I have a feeling sometimes that the county sees this as, oh, all these amenities are just going to add cost to this project. Can we afford them? But potentially there's a virtuous circle here where you put in some really exciting amenities and you actually find private parties, you know, and companies along Wisconsin who want to help out because they really want to see the realization of all that. You actually get them really excited by it. So, you know, we may find that, and we could well be a motor for that as well, that, that we would be really active in, in that campaign to encourage private sector involvement and, and the funding of the amenities that we all want to see there.
Barney, this is Rich.
Yeah.
I, I want to understand Irene's position a little better. Is it, is it, no matter what the, how the cost overrun comes about, is that the town isn't willing to contribute in, in terms of those cost overruns?
What I'm saying is during the July 4th celebration, I had a number of residents come up to me asking about this particular resolution and my feelings about it. And then in particular, all of them expressing concern about, we have a very large reserve, as you know, and that there may be the impression by some that the county can continue to come back and keep asking for more money from the town because we have so much of it. And that was a kind of a line in the sand that a few of the residents were drawing to say, four and a half million, it's a lot of money for this project. And as you're thinking about the other contributing sources and, you know, this relative size, who's, who's going to be making money off of this, blah, 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 blah. While they're in support of the parks and understand fully about the value to the town, there was this like, we really shouldn't be giving more than, even four and a half is a lot, but I can get behind that, but no more. So I'm just expressing that. Now as to how I feel about it, I, I am concerned. I am concerned that, that, that there'll be two, three more rounds of this. More money, more money, more money and more resolutions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't doubt for a minute that there's going to be cost overrun. So it, is it fair to say that, you know, we understand that we're not moneybags and that we may be perceived as having moneybags, but we don't, we aren't, that we would want to negotiate what our fair share would, and to Joel's point, what our fair share of a legitimate cost overrun that's, you know, an unf, that we would want to negotiate?
Yeah. And that, and this is the letter of intent. So all this was what, what comes up in, before we'd be signing any binding documents, which, which will happen over the course of this fall and probably till the end of the year.
Can I ask you a question? What would the, the, what's the document going to be that is the binding document? Is that a, I mean, what is that? What is that contractual obligation? Like what, what, what vehicle are we using?
It's a very good question, Joel. The short answer is the county doesn't know yet.
Okay.
They haven't progressed this past a letter of intent, sort of pulling together the parties and having four signatures. But in terms of exactly what documents need to be drafted and who signs what documents, I don't think they've even had their lawyers think about how that structure should be set up. So I, I, there'll be a series of project documents. It'll have to be. And we may or may not have to sign all of them. We may only have to sign some of them. But I'm almost more, you know, we have to be, even if those that we don't sign, we have to read them and understand them because they could affect us. So that's, that, that's still to be done. And I, again, I don't think that the attorneys are really focused on that yet.
Yeah. And just Ron, I mean, just in that way, you know, it's public-private partnership, but it's a multi-governmental, public-private partnership. Just any vehicles in your experience that fit?
Sure. I think there's going to be a couple of different documents. I would imagine that most of the provisions of the LOI could be in a memorandum of understanding, which is, you know, another word for contract. It can be a written contract for many of the provisions. However, for ones that we want to run with the land in perpetuity, we've got to record in land records. So that would be a declaration of covenants. And there may also be some restrictions imposed by plat, by park and planning. But, you know, when we get to that, that stage, Francois will have, you know, a better sense than, than I, what would be the appropriate vehicles. But definitely a declaration of covenants for, you know, what we want to apply in perpetuity. Like the town's ability to.
Then, then just one more, one more technical question on that. If it, with the covenants, whatnot, from a council voting perspective, like what kind of obligations, what kind of public hearing notice in the back of our minds from a timing perspective, right? Because if we're walking back, the timing, the change, the transition, just want to get a feel for what kind of timing requirements there would be for us to do that from our town perspective related to public engagement.
And also because well, it could be a transition to another council by the time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, a lot of it will depend on whether the council thinks that additional public hearings are, are necessary. Ordinarily, the, the nitty gritty negotiation of a contract would not be subject to public hearing. Your, your public hearing might be what you're doing tonight, frankly, the discussion of the overall project and the approval of the town's resolution. You do have to have the public hearing for the amendment of budget and appropriation of monies to submit to the project. But, you know, after that, the negotiation of contract and covenant terms would be, you know, more administrative. But, you know, the council's, you know, free to engage in what additional public hearings it wishes.
Thanks.
It makes sense after the charrette, right? You get everybody really super excited. Then, then if something comes back and it says, oh, look, it's $350,000 more, we have another public hearing if everyone got so excited about the amenities. So that's another way of doing this. It'll take longer though.
Well, but I think you make a good point. We probably won't get a better bead on revised budget if one is necessary until after the charrette process. And then we'll have to see how we want to handle that. And then that's, that's where the combination of private donations, parking lot district taking back a note, and some, you know, we'll have to see what's in the pot at that time and then what's left over that, you know, we might have to take up. But I think the, the general proposition that we're not an ATM just to dole up money is, is taken. I think the, the question I have is that if there are amenities that we want and we think they'll really help the park and also help the town, there'll be a question, well, are you willing to support them? So that's where the pushback will come. But I just, I don't think we can forecast that right now. It's very hard to.
Just one more timing thing, just to note inauguration is, it was the first week of December, four years ago. So the inauguration for the county council, I assume is the first week of December this time as well. Not, not January or later.
I don't know. What, what you've sort of touched on a good point, I don't know, Ron, if you can answer this. But assuming that the, the amendment to the CIP goes in September and the county council promptly approves it, then does the county council have to approve the subsequent execution of the documents that memorialize everything? Or is that really just up to the county executive to execute? I mean, normally the county council wouldn't be involved in reviewing detailed contracts for the execution of projects. I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I don't know the answer to that, but I think your assumption is correct. That once, you know.
Okay.
Once the, the council has approved the budgeting, the executive would execute the agreement by negotiating the contract. But I, I'm not certain of that.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the resolution as has been revised and we sent around yesterday?
I move to approve those.
Okay.
Rich is on.
Second, does any, see your hand go up, Joy? You, you almost got to propose, but I'll have to accept it.
Rich is on a roll tonight, you know?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you all very much. We'll communicate this to the other participants tomorrow. And we ought to make sure, Todd, that it's not only recorded in the town, in, in our, the recorder, but also that we put it as a town crier with a link so the residents can see the revised resolution.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to, Ron, did you want to?
I was saying goodnight.
Oh, okay. Good night. Thank you. Zimmerman Park.
Oh, that's the last thing.
Last thing to do.
Last thing, hopefully, hopefully it'll be quick. You've seen the staff report regarding this issue. Dave and Tolbert met with Jason in the park to review the preliminary stormwater management plan that has been submitted to DPS for review. They noted, and I'll give credit to Dave for this. Dave noted some deficiencies in the plan, some realities that maybe Jason wasn't aware of that needed to be addressed with respect to grading and drainage realities. And they did meet out there. They met with Tolbert. They identified certain trees that may be problematic with a sidewalk adjacent to them or in trees that might be able to be removed in order to allow the sidewalk to be installed behind the curb rather than out into the existing street. And all of the players in this, including Jason and Tolbert, Dave and I agree that removing these specific trees for purposes of opening up the lower end of the park and allowing the curb, excuse me, the sidewalk to be placed behind the curb would make for a better project, including the ability to, to do the grading and drainage improvements that we need to make. So I, I'll leave it at that and I'll open it up to you to ask questions about it. But I think the staff report basically lays out exactly what our proposal is and what we, or how we intend to modify the plan with the civil engineer to, to proceed with further submissions for stormwater management and construction drawings.
Todd, can you clarify something? So, because I thought that when we originally approved the plan for the Zimmerman Park redevelopment last year, that there was, that we, we foresaw the need to remove some trees or to move some trees from one place to another. I mean, we were playing, so is this essentially like now that we were getting down to brass tacks and we're actually looking at the actual engineering of the space that we designed? That we're, that you've determined that, or Dave has had a look and seen that it's different trees that need to be either moved or removed?
So there's a black gum and five hollies that were always intended to be transplanted. So we know in order to open up the, the green area and to be able to provide for appropriate drainage, that we're going to transplant some trees. There's a sweet gum tree and a red bud tree and a styrax tree that we evaluated in field and determined, and with Dave and Tolbert's assistance and meeting with Jason, they determined that in order to do the grading improvements that we want to do and in order to, to prevent or address public safety concerns with respect to the sidewalk being immediately adjacent to the sweet gum tree that drops those spiked gumballs, that it would be best, we would be best served to remove those trees for both the public safety and drainage and from a perspective of public safety and drainage, the ability to provide appropriate drainage, that they would best to be removed. And in doing so, it would allow us to move the sidewalk behind the curb rather than have it come out into the street.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. I.
Sure. And the, the, the removal of these trees, they're undesirable in the sense that sweet gum produces those, the seed-bearing spiked balls. We don't, we don't plant those any longer. But it does, it does pose a public safety hazard. But those trees also can be removed, and the red bud is multi-stemmed. It's not going to survive the drainage or grading improvements, I should say, that we're, we're intending to make. So. So really, it's more beneficial for the project if we remove those trees. It opens up the area generally, that area. And so it would not be necessarily, it would be a a wash, if you will, with respect to the provision of open space. That area right now is not really a usable space, given the trees and what they produce. But putting the sidewalk where they are currently located would probably and likely be much of a much better plan for for the sidewalk alignment than we currently have.
And so I guess from a from a tree accounting standpoint, we're really only losing what one canopy tree? Is that it? And then would do we plan to replace that somewhere on that site or elsewhere in the town right of way?
Yes, absolutely. You know, there there are utility lines that span the alignment along Maple. And so the plan that has been provided to you, the last page of the of the council packet indicates or shows in the green circles where we will plant ornamentals. In order to provide a buffer between the sidewalk and the curb. We'd also like to avoid placing the sidewalk immediately adjacent to an asphalt area for maintenance, no removal purposes. It'd be best to have a buffer between the sidewalk and the curb line at least of at least five feet. And we will be able to plant ornamentals between or within that buffer to further you know, shield, if you will, or shield the park, if you will. I guess this is the best way to characterize it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, I had a couple that wanted to ask. The first, we we think that this is a significant enough change that we need to notify residents and let them comment if they wish to. It's a question to my colleagues. Or we think this is essentially pretty minor and not something that's necessary in terms of placement of the sidewalk.
Well, they're aware of the sidewalk.
Yes, they're aware of the sidewalk. This is essentially moving it what about five feet or so?
Step on down. You're the next next contestant.
Can I ask Dave to go to the podium?
Yeah, so the curb bump out that was proposed extended about five feet into the existing roadway. The sidewalk was only set back from that new curb edge by about two and a half feet. So there was a very small buffer that was proposed. So we're proposing to put the sidewalk five feet behind the existing curb line.
You're moving the sidewalk seven and a half feet.
So the sidewalk is moving by about seven or seven and a half feet. But within that seven and a half foot areas where these trees were, so that area wasn't usable as open space in the park under the current plan.
Right. I got that.
And I think a critical component of this, if I may jump in, I think a critical component of this, when Dave and Tolbert looked at the grading and drainage plan that that Jason had done, they they realized that these trees would impact for a number of reasons, whether they're undesirable cultivars or or they're not well developed. They also their their existence and their maintenance there would also impact the grading plan that we have in place or that we had proposed, I should say. And so for all of those reasons, we just think this is a much better way to proceed with relocation of the sidewalk behind the existing curb and removal of those trees to provide appropriate grading of the for stormwater management purposes.
Well, let me let me have my my thought, my question. First of all, moving the holly trees is and go back and see the full screen. All right. Thank you. Okay. I like your face, Todd, but I just wanted to make sure I could see other faces at the same time. The as I think you were indicating, Joy, the holly trees were planned to be moved anyway. So there's nothing new about that. What we're really talking about is taking down the gum tree and the red, red bud. And and I'm fine with that, too. I don't have a, and I think those spiky things really are irritating and a real hazard, actually. So I'm fine with that. But I guess in my mind, I had separated those actions from changing the shape of the sidewalk. In other words, just on the face of it, if we took down those trees and left the sidewalk where it had been planned to be, that raises two potential options. One is we simply expand the green space by a bit more, the usable green space because those trees are gone. So that's a little more play area for the kids. The other that I was wondering about was whether we could plant any canopy trees. Now, Todd, I raised this with you and you said we can't. But isn't the gum tree itself a canopy tree? So why can't we replace something that would grow like the gum tree would have?
I think it's given this location. It's not directly under the power lines. But if we, Dave, do you want to take this?
Are the power lines right there on that side of the street?
They are. Yeah, the sweet gum is behind the lines. So, you know, by you could put a new canopy tree back where the gum tree is. But, you know, the idea is to have sort of an open play space there, you know.
Well, but we're not, but you're in the plan that you guys are proposing, there's no open play space. You aren't, you're not actually expanding the open space. What you're doing is taking two trees out and moving the sidewalk in. So.
No net loss, right? There's no net loss.
Loss, but there's no net gain. If we took the two trees out and left the sidewalk where it is, then there would be a net gain if we didn't replant anything there. There would be, but alternatively, we could also consider planting a new canopy tree. And I don't, I guess I'm so sensitive to the the issue of how brutal our summers are that prospectively having some additional shade into that into the grassy area strikes me as desirable. So anyway, that's what, as I, I completely agree with the the parts about moving the holly trees, agree with taking down the two trees that you eliminated listed, but I I find myself on the fence in respect to moving the sidewalk for reasons I just said.
Yeah. So as part of the project, obviously, there's going to be an extensive landscaping plan that's developed. So there's certainly an opportunity to identify locations for for canopy trees. I guess the other consideration, you know, we sort of had was, you know, the extra cost of bumping that curb line out. You know, we just repaved that street, just put all new curbs in a year ago. And so really, what's the benefit of adding, you know, is the extra 400 square feet of turf area that you get, you know, along that strip worth the cost that's added to the project?
But we we worry, we have put that in the budget of the project already, right? That that the expectation of the path cutting narrowing the street or something which we've. And and not.
One of the other.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
I was always and still am concerned about is I I think we've got to have access to that park and and I always like, I like the current plan because I think you can probably get some parking along there. You lose that parking space.
I'm sorry, you lose the park if we if, are you saying that if if the path is 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 if if we go with management's recommendation, then you're saying that it'll be easier for us to put in parking along there?
Yes.
And you're concerned that if we bump it out, that would actually make it harder for us to put parking there?
Right. Yes.
Sure, I understand you properly.
I did. I never liked that. I never, I never liked to bump out to begin with because of because of that parking situation.
The thing is, though, as a council, we never discussed parking at all. We did not actually want to create a situation, especially for the residents who live in that part of the town, even though they there it's permitted street parking where there would be this expectation of having a couple of parking spaces there. So it was a bit like feeding two birds with one seed by by expanding the green space, bumping out the sidewalk as was originally proposed and and kind of effectively not allowing for parking to be there.
Yeah, I mean, I I recall.
Well, parking is parking.
When doing.
Is there parking there now?
Well, there's sort of is but isn't. But the the idea at the time, I mean, not really. The idea at the time was to have a the ability of people to walk safely alongside the park that would have a fence around it on the edges so that they can continue to traverse. And then frankly, for the, you know, young people to walk straight on to the sidewalk going up East West Highway. So that was the idea. We didn't really envision or think of it as a park, an additional parking option because we're now occupying whatever the width, the three to four feet sidewalk. So just like in the past, that was the discussion. But people.
Yeah, I wasn't.
There that often.
Well, I I think if we, I think if we create and and a men, a a nice space there and you have it as a play, a play.
Well, I mean, we, we, you know.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get residents from the other side of town that simply are going to want to drive over there. So
Right.
I just, I, there's parking there now. So I I I never did like. But and it sounds to me like the the access for kids is actually going to be better because it's more straight line. But that.
You you raise a good point. And another point that I I I'd like to make is that if you look at the alignment currently, we've done a couple of things that make it in my opinion, less usable realistically by pedestrians, especially kids. They're not going to follow a winding trajectory of a sidewalk. They're going to cut through the park and create bear spots.
Right.
We're trying to create a more linear, direct connection to east west. That's a tangential benefit of the alignment here is to create a more usable, functional sidewalk. Because the way it's currently located, no one, very few, especially kids, are not going to follow the trajectory of the sidewalk. They're going to follow the path of least resistance. And they're going to trample a bare area through that park like we've already done in order to ask to scale that hill to get to the top of east west. I just think a more linear, a a a strater point A to point B sidewalk is much more functional, much more usable, much more feasible to do.
I agree.
However, we did promise residents that the green space would be at its maximum.
Right. And I think the only point that I would make there is that no one's really using the space where the trees are currently located. It's not a usable space. But I think frankly, it's more usable if you get rid of the sweet gum and you create a sidewalk that's four to five feet wide. It becomes open space itself. But I don't think a lot of people are going to be playing in in the five feet behind the curb.
Where does the fence go up to? Along that sweep right now, where do we plan to bring the fence? All the way to the curb cut, right?
All the way to the curb cut. That's correct.
So if we did, in fact, leave the sidewalk where it is, but take out those two trees, then there would be additional green space.
I don't know if you would call it usable green space.
Well, because of the fence, I think people would feel comfortable playing right up against up to the side of the fence.
Yeah, either way.
What what's the timeframe here, Todd? What what what's the what what time do you need? By when do you need to have decisions?
Sooner the better. So you can submit revised stormwater management plans to the appropriate regulatory agencies. But yeah, he that the project will stop if we don't make a decision now. Effectively, it'll stop until we make a decision.
So then the question is, either we vote to approve these revised plans or make some other suggestion along Barney's line of thinking, which which would require yet another drawing that would have to be approved. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
I mean, I see the 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 drawing that we currently have, which shows the bump out, that's the base case, right? In other words, what what what, other than saying we're going to cut down a couple of trees, if we stayed with that, there's nothing else we have to change, is there? Always been assuming.
You can stay with what you have.
Yeah, I guess there's, we need to answer, I guess, whether the council thinks it makes sense to cut down those trees. And then
Right.
And I, once you make that decision, you need to, I guess, figure out whether you want to do the curb bump out. And then with those trees gone and the curb bump out either in or out, then, you know, we need to, I guess, pick an alignment that makes sense that avoids conflicts and then can accommodate the micro infiltration trenches that are proposed. And then, you know, pin down a fence location. And so once we figure out if the curb is in or out, and then whether the trees are in or out, you know, we can work with Jason to design the best project based on what the council wants.
So I'm personally fine with the trees. That that's not where my question's coming from. When taking out the trees. Yeah, sorry. When meeting with Jason, was there discussion that just removing those trees, as you've marked on this, we'd still have a problem with the county where with with the sidewalk placement as it's depicted here, the the pre one, not not your recommended one, but the one that was originally there. Would there be a problem with the county with the placement of this of the original sidewalk?
No, there's no problem with that. The county will know. We can, we can, we can, we can proceed as planned.
Yeah, there were a few issues, you know, he's related to the placement of a utility pole there and how that sort of functioned in relation to the stormwater management plan. So that'll have to be addressed, but that's, you know, easy enough to do.
It doesn't require the sidewalk change in terms of placement.
We we don't have to do any of these changes if the council doesn't want to. We can, we can proceed with stormwater management plans that will ultimately meet the requirements of the regulatory agencies without any, any, any modification.
Okay.
Yeah. There were tree issues where the red bud tree was probably going to die because of the existing sidewalk location. But if that tree can be cut down, that solves that problem. You know, there were some questions about the setback of the new sidewalk from the curb, just from a snow removal and sort of practicality standpoint, you know, we sort of lose the ability to plant those understory trees if we go with the current plan, but they can be put behind the sidewalk. So, you know, we have options and we're just trying to, I guess, get some direction so we can tell Jason what to design.
Well, I mean, I mean, I understand, though, if you're also going to be planting replacement trees or a line of of understory trees or or you're you're also, you're losing functional space. So you can we can't.
We can't double count. I get that.
You can't double count, right?
Okay.
Okay.
But I'm trying to see. Oh, I very spoke, I want to make sure I'm hearing from everybody. I guess what I'm, 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 no, 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 Joy, whether you have any thoughts or Joel about where you'd like to see the sidewalk?
I'm agnostic as to where the sidewalk goes. You know, I'm just really more interested in you know, trying to be responsive to residents who are going to have concerns about the trees that we, you know, we know, we knew from the get go, we were going to have to replace, or we're going to have to move or remove some trees. And so I just want to make sure that we are able to replant trees that we're going to be losing based on whatever the site will permit. But as for, you know, removing the current trees that staff recommend that we remove, let's take them out if if that's what makes the most sense.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing on the sidewalk that I really focus on is ensuring there's enough space along the sidewalk to move, to walk. Really focus on is ensuring there's enough space along the sidewalk to move, to walk adjacent to the, the park and have it connect into. The sidewalk heading onto East West Highway, so I'm not really. I, I, you know, the path has to adjust, fine, if not. Fine, I, I, I hate to say it like that, but I wouldn't mind doing another walkthrough, to be honest. I mean, I mean, maybe spatially, I, I wouldn't mind seeing it at some point to see what. The sidewalk path will look like. Just get back out there again. I, I may do that privately, but. Might not be a bad idea. To do it again, now that we're, we're. Deeper into this, um. Not, I'm not being very helpful, but I'm, I'm okay with whatever. You know, frankly, I mean, and I agree with Joy on, on tree removal, if we can replant trees.
Well, if we want to replant, and I have some sympathy with that. Then we should not move the sidewalk, because if we move the sidewalk and we then want to plant trees. Then we will have to invade some more of the green space, which we really had made a commitment we would not do. Uh, I think there's, if we don't move the sidewalk, then at least we have. The option of either planting trees roughly where they currently are, so. Residents wouldn't feel like there's any diminution of space. Or alternatively, decide not to plant and recognize we have an opportunity to gain some. Usable space. But we only have either of those two options if the path stays where it is. If we move the path inward where the red lines are. Then we foreclose, uh, the opportunity to plant. Replant trees unless we're willing to further use, um. You know, some of the, the, the open space. Well, Todd, I know why you want, I, I, I appreciate decisions and I appreciate. Wanting to, uh, you know, not wanting to slow things up, but I'm also hearing there's a, some variances and divisions here that I don't, I can't easily. Figure out how to lasso today or tonight.
Is there a talk in the councils available?
Other than, other, wait, let's put this way. There's, I think, if I'm summarizing this properly, there's consensus to move the holly trees. No problem with that. There's also consensus to take out these two trees, the gum tree and the, uh, the, the red bud tree. So there's consensus on that. Um, I think what you're hearing is. Some support for putting the sidewalk where you like it from Rich, some, some agnosticism on that, perhaps from Joel. And let me, I don't want to be unfair to either Irene or Joy, but my sense is the three of us. Might be a little more concerned about moving the sidewalk because it would. Affect the green space in ways that we might not be able to recover from. But I, I don't know if that's a firm view, but I'm just trying to put something out there to summarize.
Yeah, I, and I, and I'm, I. After listening to the discussion. I. About, the bump out actually may. Provide some more. End of, of Maple. So I'm, I'm kind of agnostic right now about whether I. I, I firmly want to get the trees taken care of and removed, but. Um, you know, if, if it means. That we can go ahead just as we planned and. As people expect it to be, then we ought to just go ahead and leave it as it is.
I would suggest you just do that.
Yeah, and.
I read, Joy, I want to make sure we get your view. What are you?
Yeah.
I was making an effort to summarize your views, but it could have been unfair, so.
No, no, I mean, I also want to trust the experts here that have, you know, really looked at this issue and have a lot more experience about this than certainly I do. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to run into issues with the county if we stuck with the current sidewalk plan. Um, and, but if, if upon further discussions with Jason that you're like, look, this is just not going to work. It needs to just be. Pushed a little bit here and a little bit there. Uh, personally, I'm fine with that. Ultimately, we're all trying to get at the same thing, which is, um, maximizing the green space. Creating on a, uh, uh, when I say attractive, the idea that people would use that sidewalk to go to the, the crosswalk, the hopefully improved crosswalk. Um, and we wouldn't be creating problems for ourselves down the road. Um, so if it ends up, um, I mean, to me, this looks like a drastic shift in terms of. Straightening out the, the sidewalk and, and moving it over seven feet, seven feet is, is enough, it's enough. Um. But I'm going to put my trust in, in you all, um, to basically say this is the right thing to do. Um, in the, in the long term, so I'm also turning agnostic, uh, if that helps, so, uh, if that makes any sense.
I feel out of it. How do you like that? Joy, do you want to say anything further?
Yeah, so, um, I mean, you know, given that, uh, I guess that, that, you know, four out of the five council members are agnostic about this particular project. Um, I, I guess we, in, in also in order not to stall, because we won't be meeting next. Month. Um, we've all agreed that the trees should be removed as recommended. Um, and we know they're working with landscapers to figure out where new trees will go, and that's great. And I guess we just assume that, um, that Clark Azar will submit plans for the. Uh, you know, for the design as we agreed to several months ago. In the last council and that. You know, as it turns out, I guess, as, as Irene said. If it turns out that we have to straighten it out, then that's what we do, but. I would. Yeah.
Right. So I think the sense is to leave it as is, but with flexibility that if in your further discussions with the county, it turns out there's a major problem and you have to then. Unbump some of it.
There won't be a major problem with the county.
Okay, well, if, if in the course of your own further deliberations, you come back and see you have, you should unbump it for some structural reasons. We would absolutely be open and hear that.
Right.
Otherwise, leave it as.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the thoughtfulness for this. Good. Okay, is there anything else for tonight? All right, with that, I do not have a gavel, you know, you haven't given me the chance to bang, to do it with my knuckles. Meeting adj- meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. And by the way, this worked very well, I think. It was. It was, it was good to have it this way, when we could see you and, uh, I think obviously, I know Rich found out that it was. You're on mute, Rich.
No, I'm not. You just couldn't hear me. It was my connection.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Thank you all very much. All right.
All right, thanks.
Good night.